Okay, I will call this meeting to order. All right, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have an action on the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second, any discussion? Okay, so we will do a vote, all in favor. Unanimous. Okay. Manifest documents, I believe, have gone around. So Tom, it is on to you for nominations.
Thank you. We have an extensive annual list of nominations. So we're looking for an approval from the board for the staff nominations for the, sorry, I can't believe I'm saying this, the 2021-2022 school year.
Move to approve.
Was it 1990, just like a few years ago?
Do you want just a motion for all of them as written?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I think Tammy already did.
Did you already, Tammy? I'll second you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion? All right, I'm gonna look closer. All in favor?
Right.
All right, unanimous? Okay, resignations.
We have two different sheets because one's for the 2021 school year and one is for the 2122 school year. So we have for the 2021 school year, Jaclyn McNamara, health and wellness teacher, the Baking Memorial School, and Shell Lebs, the STEAM teacher from Memorial School. And then for 2122, we have Amy Bear, fifth grade teacher. So I do need a nomination and a vote.
So moved.
Motion, thank you.
Move to accept resignations.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, vote, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have a very long agenda this evening, so I will keep it somewhat brief because many of the things that I would cover are included in the reasons why all of these wonderful folks are here tonight. Thanks for being here. You'll see on the agenda that we need to discuss graduation and the prom. I did want to mention a significant amount of thanks to Diana Rooney, our human resources coordinator, Mr. Angel, business administrator, Dr. Haynes, the director of teaching and learning, Kristin McNulty, and anyone else that helped the Newton Fire Department.
Kingston Fire.
Kingston Fire Department.
Kingston Police.
Kingston Police. Anyone else, Matt?
Walgreens.
Walgreens. The vaccination clinic today was absolutely rock solid and smooth. We did it in two less hours than we did three weeks ago, and there was still no line and no waiting for anyone during the clinic. It was fantastic. So I just, I don't know how to express the level of relief that I experienced on the first vaccination clinic when I saw our staff being vaccinated. I have never worried more in my entire adult life than I have this year about our teachers, about our kids and families. And I can't tell you how happy I am to have even more of you coming back to school on May 3rd. School's important. It's a safe place for a lot of people. And we took a huge step towards making it an even safer place for everyone today, and I'll leave it at that. But thank you for everyone that did the, did the hard work to make this happen. I'm so grateful. Now stock up on Gatorade and the Cenomethafen. The next few days are going to be a little rough, and you'll be all right after that. I just went through it. So just hang in there. On another note, I think it's really important for everyone to realize that we do have, we have had more than typical lately cases of COVID at the high school in particular, and a few at the middle school. I just want to be clear with everyone that we are not out of the woods yet. We're still in a pandemic. And if people are congregating outside of school without masks, not following social distancing, having parties and get togethers, you're playing with fire. And one of the parts of our community that will get burned in that fire is having school be open. We were dangerously close to having to quarantine a lot of people this week because of the actions of people outside of school. We are not seeing transmission in the schools at all. We are, we are clear through contact tracing that this is happening because people are getting together outside of school and not following the protocols. And the two biggest culprits are having fires in your backyard and sitting around the fire without a mask on and going to restaurants and not following the rules at restaurants. I can't help you with that. I'll do whatever I can to keep these schools open, but if the community doesn't rally and do these things as a united front and follow these protocols, our work is doomed. So please, I'm begging of you all, follow the rules a little longer. We can see the light. I can see the end of the tunnel. We can see the edge of the forest, but we are not there yet. And so I'm just asking you all, please, help us out because we, we want to stay fully open and we want to go to school. But if people are bringing COVID into the school because they're not doing the right thing on the outside of school, we're fighting a losing battle at school. So thank you to everyone who's following the rules. And for those of you who've been kind of laying back a little bit, I think we've got a pretty good warning here this last week that that's not going to work. And honestly, you've got a few days right now where you're remote that we can kind of hit a reset button. And if we do it together as a community, it could really help us to have a really successful May and June. So thank you for all that you're doing. I know it's really, really hard. I have a teenage son who's 16. I have a 12-year-old, and they are just itching to hang out with their friends. It's torture at my house. And so I'm experiencing it at home too, and I'm right in this with you. It is really, really hard. It is. All right, so I think that was enough. So we can move on now. That concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Okay, so committee reports and committee assignments. I guess, does anybody have a committee report?
I have two, because we've met twice.
Okay.
Okay, so the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee has met twice since our last meeting. On March 24th, we met in attendance, myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton, Superintendent Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Ms. Donnell, Mr. Malilla, Principal Snyder, and McCloskey. Mr. Malilla reported that the High School Diploma Schedule Committee is in the process of gathering and reviewing data, and they're targeting April to report to the EISA Committee. Dr. Haynes presented the recommendation of the Math Curriculum Search Committee, which is to adopt Envision Mathematics 2020 Common Core for grades K through six. The committee, that committee reviewed 20 curricula, and they used a number of tools and methods to isolate programs which would meet the district's requirements, including surveys of families from each school. It was test piloted with two other finalist programs, Reveal Math and Illustrative Math, and it was determined to be the superior fit for the district. Her presentation was followed by lengthy discussion with committee members asking a number of questions, including inquiries into the materials, performance history, and experiences of other districts. Members of the EISA Committee were invited to the SAU office on the 26th of March for an open review of the materials and to provide the administration additional time to research these questions. And we agreed that our committee would meet on March 31st for further discussion. And so last Wednesday, in attendance, myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton, Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, and Ms. Donnell. All right, the committee resumed our deliberation of the proposed math curriculum, Envision Math 2020 Common Core. Dr. Haynes and Ms. Donnell were able to reach several districts to gather information about their experiences, and they reported positive reviews. One district in particular reported being very pleased with the level of rigor and growth in math scores and engagement of the students and parents. They did stress the importance of thorough training as being integral to a successful implementation. Dr. Haynes also reported recently learning that Timberlane, Hampstead, and Derry are using Envision Math, either the 2020 version that we are looking at or the prior release. Mr. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Dutton reported that they were favorably impressed with the materials and found the grade level work to be advanced in comparison with our current curriculum. Mr. Fitzpatrick is comfortable that the program will prepare students for eighth grade algebra. Ms. Dutton noted that the multisensory options will fit well with the intervention program, and she also appreciated that the depth of the teaching materials would help to promote easier adoption by outside substitute teachers. Ms. Mahoney commented that she met at length with Dr. Haynes and Ms. Donnell to gain a comfort level with the selection and pilot processes and is happy that this program will offer more flexibility in enabling students to learn math than the current program we have. Mr. Fitzpatrick moved that the committee recommend to the board that the district replace everyday math in K6 with Envision Math 2020 as presented and reviewed between the committee and the administration. Ms. Dutton seconded that motion, and this was unanimously approved by a roll call vote. Our committee extends its appreciation to all administration and staff for their hard work and diligence, especially under the difficult circumstances of this year.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to committee assignments. I will go by subcommittee. So personnel, Mr. Broderick, Mr. Baker, and myself. Facilities, we will have Mr. Baker, Mr. Broderick, and Mr. Fitzpatrick. Finance, we will have Mr. Baker, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Ms. Bashaw. Policy, we will have Ms. Mahoney, Ms. Ingham, and myself. Public Relations will be Ms. Mahoney, Ms. Ingham, and Ms. Bashaw. Excellence in Student Achievement will be Ms. Mahoney, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and myself. And then for Wellness, we will have Ms. Ingham. SST, we will have Mr. Broderick, and the Budget Committee representative will be Ms. Bashaw. I did, in going through, looking up all of my roles as board chair and all of that, I did come across two policies that are a little conflicting in how this works. I know what has been done, what has been consistent. But just for transparency purposes, there is, so BDE is what typically has been followed. It's at discretion of the board chair. Committee assignments will be made. That was revised October 2016. There was another policy, BBAB, appointment of the members by the board chair, subject to full board approval. That was adopted December of 2018 as a new policy. We haven't done that to date, but just to make sure we are following the rule, not necessarily to set a precedent, but to follow the policy that is in place, I would just like to request that we, someone makes a motion to accept the nominations that I put forward to keep everything going. And then we will, I'm going to recommend that this goes straight to policy to see why we have conflicting policies and making sure we make them congruent because it doesn't make sense to have two conflicting policies here. So if someone wouldn't mind making a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the slate of subcommittee assignments as listed by the board chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, so we will move on.
Cam, if I may.
Yes.
You want us to work without each other as far as when the next meetings will be of these committees?
There's a calendar.
I believe.
We'll send out the calendar.
I think Phyllis is already, I think Phyllis is already working on that. So yep, that will.
We did take into account Mr. Fitzpatrick's point about finance.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just wondering how we were going to do it.
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. If there are conflicts, you know, we can have conversations, but Phyllis is already working on getting that all squared away.
I also have a suggestion about the agenda, given that finance and facilities may flip weeks. Is that finance precede facilities on the agenda?
Sure, we can do that.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would also like to suggest that we start meeting in public, our subcommittees as soon as possible.
Yep, yep, I agree.
Pete, I don't think Pete could hear. Ms. Mahoney was just saying that the subcommittee, we're coming, we're going to have, we have an agenda item about May 3rd and bringing more students back and all that. But assuming that something, assuming that that continues with the plan that's currently been presented by administration, it would make sense to have, be congruent as a board and that our, that our subcommittees also meet in person because we are starting to function. As I said, we can see the end of the woods. So it's good. And honestly, I just can't stand Zoom. Sorry, it's not about me, but I, except I do like it when my cat visits. That's kind of funny. She likes to visit Zoom calls. But I'd much rather meet in person the way we always have prior to the pandemic.
All right, Jake, it looks like you're up.
All right, so Student Council will be hosting Penny Wars in the library from April 14th to April 21st, and all money received will go to COVID Relief and Spring Carnival.
Sorry, can you share what Penny Wars is? Because it's really fun, and I want to make sure the board knows how that works.
So Penny Wars is each grade has a bucket in the library right over there, and you're going to be able to put coins in it for your grade. And whichever grade has the highest total will be like the winner of Penny Wars, and other grades can sabotage your grade by putting dollar bills in your bucket. So.
It's really fun.
It's really fun, yeah. And Spring Carnival will be held in the last week before April break, and we'll have a socially-distanced pep rally on Friday the 23rd. All grades are working hard to win Winter Carnival, Spring Carnival, sorry.
Cool.
That's all I got.
Okay, all right, we will move on to our first public comment. All right, well, since everybody's jumping up, we will move on to Mr. Dawson's sports award presentation.
Howdy, everybody.
Hello.
Wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize a couple of our senior basketball players who won a few things this season. We wanted to sort of publicly recognize the fact that we had a pretty darn successful season. Our boys team made the final four for the first time ever. Girls team had an amazing season as well and ended up playing probably the best other team in the state in the first round, unfortunately, up at their joint. Didn't work out the way we wanted to, but they both had incredible seasons, as did our ice hockey team, who lost to the eventual state finalists in the first round as well. So it was a really good winter season. We're really thankful to you guys for letting the kids play, and they are certainly more thankful than I am from all the nights out that we had, but it was well worth that. And I'll talk about spring sports in a couple of minutes, but I wanted to talk about two seniors in particular. Maddie Houghton, who's going to stand right here, and Dylan Khalil. And they're also very excited to be standing here. So Maddie was a senior captain on our team, chosen as Division II winner of the Jack Ford Memorial Scholar-Athlete Award, which I have here. This is based on basketball skills, but also academics and her community service outside of school. This is one of the top early two awards given to any student athlete in New Hampshire for basketball. Maddie was also the Moynihan Lumber Scholar-Athlete for the Summer League that was held here at school, and we hope it will happen again this summer. She was second-team All-State and All-Academic for Division II as well, and her family and Coach Gray are here. We had a situation at the end of the season where we had basically four of the five starters on varsity got quarantined all at the same time for 10 days right at the beginning of the season. Maddie didn't have to do that because she has a job that got her vaccinated early, which was great. So she got to play 31 minutes out of a 32-minute game and tried to play every position on the floor all at the same time. I happened to walk out of the gym that night with her, and I believe the comment was something to the effect of, "I can't feel my legs," as she was walking out. And those of kids who played with her and watched her play notes, that's kind of the fierce intensity with what she played. She's a fantastic kid. And if Coach Gray would come up, if you would present her with that. Thank you, sir. You get to stay. I know you're excited, but a spritz for Bill. Dylan Khalil is also a captain of the team, scored his 1,000th point, and it's a basketball that I completely forgot. It's in my office right now. And it's really beautiful. I want to thank Gillian Swift of our art department for painting that up. We're actually going to make two. One we can leave at the school, one I'm going to send home, but I'm not going to tell them which one's the right one that he scored the points with. He's the eighth Sanborn player to score his 1,000th point in high school, and that's in probably the 60- or 70-year history of us playing basketball. And as I said, they advanced to the NHL semifinals for the first time. Any basketball team since 1957, boys or girls, has made it to the state final four. He was named to Division II First Team All-State. He was the Player of the Year. He was on the All-Defensive Team. He also won the Jack Ford Award for Academics/Community Service in Basketball, the Sanborn Coaches Award, Mr. Basketball for New Hampshire, which is the award for the top player in any division across all of New Hampshire. And so that's our kid over right here. His family's here, Coach Fickers in the back. And the little moment I remember from him this season was, I believe it was at the Pelham game. It might have been the same day, the story that we had with Maddie, but we ended up winning that game pretty handily, that particular one. And Dylan comes down the floor, tries to steal the ball, basically by doing what seems to be a Khalil family trait with the three boys, which is to lay out flat on the floor and splatter himself on the floor trying to get it. He missed a relatively inconsequential steal, but he really wanted it for whatever reason. And as he's taken off down the floor, he just hammers the floor with his hand because he was so mad at himself and probably went down and stole the ball at the other end anyway, and then scored his point. So it was just, that kind of intensity is something that we saw. He's not the loudest kid in the world, not the most boisterous kid in the world, but on the floor, what he does speaks volumes about himself, his fantastic family, and we're looking forward to his brother's being here. His brother also, Jared, was a Division II Second Team All-State this year, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. But we have a couple of things. If Coach Ficker would come on up. So first, we have the Division II Boys Player of the Year, the Jack Ford Award for Division, for all divisions, and then the biggest one right here is also the Mr. Basketball Award for New Hampshire from the New Hampshire Basketball Coaches Association. Thank you, guys. You're welcome. Thank you. So I have some other things I'd love to do now.
Okay, we have, we have eight minutes until we have to go to the public hearing on the donations.
So if we can have Mr. Dawson do his other part of the evening, it might make sense.
Yeah, yeah, if you think.
I'm begging and grovelling, so it's effective. That's good.
Good to go.
Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to give a public shout out to the Booster Club. They've had a tough year because they haven't been able to sell any food at games, so I haven't been buying their pizza. They weren't able to have reached the beach, which we're hoping to have back in the fall again. They did somehow manage to find the time to donate two tents to the program for a grand total of about $4150, and those two tents are in my office waiting to be deployed for the season. Our athletic trainer is extremely happy about that, so we wanted to give a public thank you to the boosters for that. I'm not sure if you ought to accept that donation or not.
We will. Next meeting, we will have to. Another meeting. We'll add that to a future agenda, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you. All right. We did kick off our season for spring sports in the last couple of days. I do, I did run the totals this afternoon. We had a couple of kids that are not choosing not to participate. We've had 137 high school athletes out of about 625 that are involved in a spring sport, including 59 kids who are out for track, and those are kids who are actively showing up for track. And at the middle school level, we have 50 students. That's a little bit down, but we've seen that consistently for the year. The middle school's been a little lower than the high school with, so we'll have one baseball team, one softball team, and a couple of dozen kids running track for us this year. Schedules are coming together. It's been a real challenge, in particular at the JV level, to get games. So we're getting there with that. And games start next Tuesday with, I believe, a middle school game next week. COVID's taken a bit of a hit on our stuff. Just wanted to let you know where the NHI has come down. Students this spring are going to be masked in every activity they do in sports per the NHIA regulations, including at bat, pitching, with the four exceptions, all of which occur in track, and that would be throwing the javelin, throwing the discus, running hurdles, which they're worried about kids getting blinded, and as you can imagine, pole vaulting is not the smartest thing to do with a mask on, so they're going to taking their mask off, pole vaulting, and putting it right back on. But everything else, including running the two-mile, and some people here are very excited about that, will be done with a mask on. I don't know why anybody would run the two-mile anyway, but, you know, they get to do that with a mask on. So exciting, I'm sure, to think about that. So that's been a good thing. And I think that was basically it. The COVID numbers are in the report I gave you and a quick update on the awards, if you wanted to talk about that. I don't know if you do or not, but there was some updating for some information you were looking for there.
If you could share the update on the academic awards, I'm sorry, the athletic awards and plan. Great, we've got five more minutes. We might as well wrap up your two agenda items.
Yep, so the, it's been a super challenge this year to get the awards together. I have been building, rebuilding the database of all the awards that our student athletes have earned over time. And my plan this year, this spring, is to start meeting with our senior athletes one at a time and making sure they have their letters. I just received 1,000 pins from a company that I purchased them from. A student athlete, when they're done, would receive a letter for a varsity athletic for their first time they are on the varsity team. We're going to make sure they get those. I have those. They would receive a certificate, a paper certificate, for every sport that they participate in, and also a pin for each of those sports that they participate in at the varsity level. So they'll get the letter, the certificate for every sport, JV or varsity, the pin for all the varsity sports. If they're a captain, they get an extra pin. Our managers get pins, and in some cases, we do award letters to our managers, as they are well-deserved. The kids will receive photographs that are done by a local resident, Kevin Pillsbury, who is amazing, and he hooks the kids up with the photographs that they all look forward to. We have the senior scholar athletes. They receive letters, certificates, and sometimes attendance in an event, which we're not going to have this year. That's been done virtually. And for the senior awards night at the end, which is normally a banquet, but we're going to do as part of Senior Week this year, they do receive a plaque with a photograph that they choose which sport they want and a rundown of all their athletics that's for the wall at home. And, oh, I missed one. Some kids will receive team-specific awards. Each team will have like the coaches' award, most improved, whatever they choose, and they get a small five-by-seven plaque. Almost all of those have been distributed for the year. The plaques are, and a lot of the paper and the photographs I'm churning through over time while building schedules and things like that. So our kids certainly don't lack for recognition and physical tokens of that recognition during their time here. And I didn't mention the middle school kids receive paper certificates for their participation at the middle school level as well. And I think that's it.
With three minutes to spare, good job.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thanks.
So.
If Matt could run the hearing, I want to go get a picture.
Yeah.
Okay.
Congrats again.
Congratulations. All right, so we've got a couple of minutes, and then you are doing.
Explain the grant?
I guess not.
So much for my projection.
Wow. All right, so a couple of minutes, and we will, Matt will explain the grant. I don't know that we have time to. Will you tell us what you guess it is?
Well, I'll tell you what, what they said it was. It doesn't actually line up with the acronym.
So the acronym is incorrect.
I'm sure they have another name for it, but.
I promise we'll get, as soon as we get through this, we'll get right to graduation and prom.
Yeah.
Hey, Jake, I have rolls of pennies at home. Does that help you?
Yeah.
Depends on which class you give them to.
Exactly. That is the funnest fundraiser. I love it.
They've done it at Memorial, they did it at Memorial when we were raising money for the.
Oh, they did? It's really fun.
We had one guy put a $100 bill in someone else's bin last year.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Does a dollar bill remove 100 pennies from somebody else?
A thousand.
Yeah.
Thousand, wow. What do the funds go to?
We're giving it to COVID-19 Relief. We're not exactly sure where exactly we're going with that, but Ms. Povare's on top of that, so.
That's awesome.
Wicked fun. Okay. I might have been known to sneak a few bills in a certain couple of spots, but I'm not saying who or where. It's just really fun.
We're friends.
And what's, what's a dollar penalty when you drop a bill?
Yeah, it's so funny because like they, they get all into it. It's just great. All right, it's 6:30.
Perfect. All right, Matt is on.
All right, so this is acceptance of the Esser II donation or grant for.
All right, so this is acceptance of the ESER two donation or grant for four hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriation. We can use the funds for expenditures that date back to the emergency declaration, which is March thirteenth, two thousand twenty. But, but specifically, we can use the funds for addressing learning loss, preparing schools for reopening, testing, repairing, and upgrading projects to improve air quality in schools. So far to date, we've, after, after you accept this grant, we've received a total of one million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars towards COVID relief.
Dr. Haines is.
And along with the, just want to make sure this is on, along with the program, with the ESER funds, come the program assurances that were signed by the superintendent that will be uploaded into the grants management system. What the program assurances say is basically, we are assuring the state that we will be expending the funds as directed. We will not be using them in any way that is not aligned with what's allowed under the ESER two parameters.
So these are reimbursements. Thank you very much, Matt, for your hard work on getting these, on money that's already been spent. Is that right?
No, it's, it's a combination of, we can, we can spend it towards money that we've already spent, but we can also spend it towards future projects. So of the unreimbursed costs, we probably have about like five or ten thousand dollars that I haven't put towards a grant right now. I think what's going to happen with this, and this is in the preliminary stages, and I'm just kind of reaching out here. I think it would be better to spend the money on addressing the learning losses so that we would be more focused education. And I'm sure Patty could probably discuss this better, which is to prepare the kids for the loss of the learning that they've incurred while on remote.
Okay, so we, to, to make it, tonight is about accepting the grant. The administration will work on a proposal for what we think the grant should be spent on. And one area that is of great importance and will probably be a part of any future grants that we receive is recognizing the, the rectification of the learning loss that occurred during the COVID pandemic. So I'll give you some examples. Some districts are using it to fund a summer school program for students that are behind in reading and math. Some districts are using it to purchase supplementary curriculum materials to help with students that are behind. We certainly are going to have a conversation about the eighty thousand dollars worth of books that I keep putting in the budget that we can't fund to help students have access to rich text. We also are going to have a conversation about after-school programming. We're going to talk about Bakey and the air quality at Bakey and what, what's going on over there with the heating system. There's a lot to talk about, but right now, we just need the board to approve. You're not approving any plan. You're just approving the dollar amount that we received for the grant. We have to work on preparing a plan, and we have, this isn't the type of thing where we have to spend it by July first or something. It's a two- or three-year period that we can work on this. So we really need to sit down at central office and have a, a conversation as a team and have a conversation with the administrators and kind of figure out, look at the data for our district and figure out how to best spend the money. And, and there's a lot of different ways that we can do that. Is that, did I get it right?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the donation. Accepted.
A second. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous? Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, it looks like we are on to approval of K through six math program. Dr. Haines, you're back on. So we're just going to make sure that I'm all plugged in here. Give me a moment.
Oh, yeah.
Shut up as I extended, it looks like.
So thank you for having me here to do this. The folks in the ISA committee already saw this presentation, so this will be a rehash of that, and everybody received these slides ahead of thanks to Phyllis. And this is just the report about the K six math program that we have recommended. I want to thank profusely all of the people you see on this slide. We've got teachers from every grade level, including special educators. We've got Donna Donnell, who is our K through six math coordinator, Amy Carroll kindergarten, Gail Scharest, first grade, Tricia Black, second grade, Bonnie Bagna, third grade, Carrie Daigle, grade four, Rich Laporte, fifth grade, Sherry Alessio, sixth grade, Jolene Johnson and Sue Burns are our special educators. They were the people that sat on the committee that did all of the work that I'm going to explain that they went through in order to narrow down all of the possibilities for math programs to the one, to the one that we're recommending to you that is sitting on your tables and in your stations to ninth. So it, it was a huge undertaking for them. They were teaching in a remote format when they first started this. Then we had students who were both remote and in person, and so they've gone through a lot of different iterations of, of school this year. And the work that they did was immense. And so I just want to give them a huge, huge thank you for everything that they did to make this happen for us this year. So the math program selection began actually in the spring of twenty nineteen, which Donna Donnell and I went to a conference and started looking around at things because we knew that the math scores were not great. And due to the reorganization and the pandemic, we didn't actually assemble our math committee until this past fall. And as you saw, there were volunteers from each grade level, K through six, and also special educators. So before we look at what, what is recommended, I want to just take us back in time and look historically at where we've been with mathematics. We currently are using the Everyday Math Program. It was chosen for the district in two thousand seven. In two thousand twelve, it was updated to be aligned with Common Core state standards, and so we switched to that version. And then in two thousand sixteen, there was a new addition that was deployed by Everyday Math that had a little bit of a shift made to that also, and we stayed with it. The results of us staying with Everyday Math, however, is not great. And you can see here, and this is the same data that's presented in our annual report, with teachers closely following how to implement Everyday Math and adding supplemental instructional methods as the years went on, we see that student learning did not improve. So we start out in just five years, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. This is the state math assessment proficiency level. We wanted to know what percentage we're scoring proficient. And in two thousand eighteen, we switched tests. We went from Smarter Balance in the state of New Hampshire to the New Hampshire statewide assessment system. You see a little bit of a dip there. And in two thousand nineteen, it's important to note that in two thousand twenty, last spring, there were no math assessments, no ELA assessments because of the pandemic, so there will not be data for two thousand twenty. But this is the last five years, and it's, we're not able to quite break seventy percent at our best of students hitting proficient. Not good enough. And if you look at the same data, but instead of following year over year, each grade level, and each grade level on this chart happens to be a different color. So that green color is seventh grade and how they did. And so it would be two thousand fifteen's seventh graders, two thousand sixteen's seventh graders. This next chart actually looks at the same group of students, the cohort, and how they're performing over time. So if you look at, for instance, that red line, those students, when you start at the beginning with forty-seven percent proficient, that was when they were in grade four. In grade five, they went up a little bit. Grade six, a little bit more. Grade seven, we've got that slide. And they end in grade eight at forty-five percent proficient. By looking at student progress by cohort, so by group of students and following how they're doing as they work together year after year after year through the school, we're seeing that there's not any improvement there. They're struggling. And what that tells us as a curriculum person looking at this, that says to me that there is a problem with the program that's being used. The program itself has deficiencies that are becoming worse as time goes on. Instead of students being able to increase and improve on their learning, it's not helping. So that's a program problem. So knowing that this is what our data has, even with supplements to the program, which our teachers have been doing, year after year, our scores didn't improve. Cohort growth, following the same group of students, following them from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade to see how they're doing, still no improvement. So there's problems with the Everyday Math Program for our students, which is why we knew we needed to make a change. And so we started the program selection process. The program selection process was framed with us thinking about our math vision as a district. And our vision for mathematics in Sanborn is that every student will see themselves as a mathematician. This doesn't mean that every student is going to go into a career in math, but we want to make sure that our students have the capability to tackle math situations when they encounter them. So there's three different parts to this, and those are highlighted at the bottom. There's conceptual understanding, which is understanding the math concepts, operations, addition, subtraction, how addition is similar to multiplication, how subtraction is similar to division. Students would understand why ideas are important and where to use them. And this also supports the retention of understanding of math concepts. So once a child understands that three plus three is six and when to use addition, it's harder for them to forget that. They understand the concept of math. We also want to make sure that the program we have facilitates procedural fluency, which is carrying out procedures or doing the math flexibly, accurately, and efficiently. So knowing that if I have four rows of three buttons, instead of adding four plus four plus four, I can do that as four times three. So our students are able to do it fluently. We also want them to have strategic competence, which is being able to formulate and solve math problems, like in real-world situations. If I go to the store and my mother tells me I need to buy three dozen eggs, am I buying three separate dozens that might cost two dollars each? Or do I buy one package of two dozen and then an extra dozen? And maybe the two dozen costs a dollar fifty, and the extra dozen costs two dollars. How do I figure that out? So it's the problem solving with that, with the real-world application. We also want to make sure our students are able to reason, think logically about how things are related to each other. There's a lot of thinking in math that goes beyond knowing your facts. And that's emphasized across the world when you're actually dealing with math problems. In the end, what this results in is our students having the disposition where they see that math makes sense. They see that it's useful. They believe that if they put in their effort, it's going to pay off. And they see themselves as learners, which is going to help across the board. So the committee that you saw on that slide at the beginning started by using something called the IMET. The IMET is the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool. This was developed in response to the Common Core standards that are used to develop the math programs and that are used to also develop the standardized tests that we measure our student proficiency with. They have non-negotiables listed in this IMET that are things that have to happen in a math program at a certain developmental time for our students to learn. So it's not appropriate to assess students on something that they haven't learned yet. You wouldn't necessarily be asking a child to find the area of a triangle if you've never taught it. But there are programs out there that will spend time on that in the assessment without even spending time on that in the teaching. And the other non-negotiable is that the material focuses on the major work of the grade level. So if you know that fourth grade is the year that we spend learning about multiplication and division and how they're related, that's what the program includes in it. It's not spending time on stuff that might not be relevant in fourth grade, like counting. There's also things like conceptual understanding, application, and procedural skill and fluency that are reviewed in the IMET. And they look to see that the standards for math practice, what is actually being taught, is aligned. The IMET also asks teachers to look to see if all students, students on IEPs, students with five oh fours, students who are English language learners, can understand the material and the way it's presented, and that there are other ways to address those areas for those students. And the IMET finally looks to see that the materials and lessons are designed very well so that it makes sense from beginning to end, and that learning is supported instead of jumping all around and confusing our learners. This is just a sample page of the IMET that was used by the committee, and it's very dense. There's a lot of reading. Members of the ISA committee looked at this. It's a pretty thick document. There's a lot of pages to it. There's a lot of stuff to kind of figure out. But the non-negotiables are things that are the minimum for what has to happen. It doesn't mean that you can't teach students on things that are beyond what's asked for in that grade level, but you shouldn't be expecting them to do things that don't make sense or, or haven't been taught. Our committee also then, once they used the IMET on the programs, went to something called EdReports. EdReports is a website that is developed by a group of independent practitioners that work in teams to review educational programs. They gather all the evidence. They pull together all these programs. They look to see what these programs are. They talk to the publishers, and they do this in all content areas, not just math. So math's in there, science is in there, English Language Arts, there's all kinds of stuff in there. And by doing their analyses, they produce reports for educators to look at to help them make decisions on whether or not programs are worth using. And they come up with three ratings. Either meets expectations, they get a green light, partially meets expectations, kind of a yellow light, or does not meet expectations, which is a red light. And from their website, I just pulled this chart, which sort of shows how they determine whether or not something meets expectations or partially meets expectations. For any program to meet expectations on Ed Reports, it has to be a green light in Gateway One and Gateway Two. And that stuff is all on their website if you're interested in it. But it's very similar to the non-negotiables and sort of the, looking at the standards, making sure that the lessons make sense, making sure it's developmentally appropriate. You can't get a green light at the end if something is either partially or doesn't meet. So it's an interesting way for them to look at that. And then finally, with those two pieces in place that were sort of standardized measures, the, the committee also looked at district needs. The program has to meet what we need in our district. Does the program help us fulfill what we outlined in our graduate success profile? Especially this past year, does the program have digital resources that our students can use at home? If we hit another pandemic or we have a blizzard come through, does the program have high engagement? We want our students engaged because if they're engaged and interested, learning is going to come easier. And does the program meet the mathematics teaching practices that are advocated by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics that basically says, when you teach math, these are the things that you should be thinking about so that our students can think mathematically, think logically, practice their facts, apply them in real-world situations, and really use math in real situations. So in looking at all of that, we developed a checklist where we wanted cohesive units without spiraling. And what that means is if the beginning of the unit talks about adding fractions, the whole unit is covering adding fractions until we're sure our students can master adding fractions. We're not jumping all over the place. We wanted to make sure that the program was structured. Superintendent Ambrose has a vision of workshop instruction across all content areas. And by having a structured program, there is time in there for teachers to do a mini lesson to the whole class, teachers to work with small groups of students, teachers to check in on students individually. We need that structure in place. We wanted to make sure there was skill practice. We sometimes refer to this in the education circle as naked math, doing math just to do math, whole sheets of like two plus two, three plus three, math for math's sake. We wanted to make sure that was in there because just like reading and knowing your sounds and your sight words, it's important to understand how to quickly compute things so that your mind is not spending time trying to remember what is eight times four, but instead you're trying to figure out the application of that problem that you're working on. We wanted to make sure the program had visuals to support all our learners. It's very important for students, especially the young ones, to see things and see how things are working. We wanted to make sure the program had real-world math that was purposeful, family support and connections. family support and connections, and of course, technology. We sent out a family survey through the newsletters from each of our four schools. And it was open from January 30th through February 8th. That survey collected information that we also used to help us determine what we needed in our program. The next thing the committee did was they sat through some presentations from programs. And that was in January where the publishers actually made presentations and showed what they had to offer and they could answer some questions. And then the teachers actually piloted or test flew some of the programs in their classrooms. They took a unit out of that program, one of the three programs, taught it in their class, gave an assessment, and then gathered information. Not only did they gather the information on how the kids did on the assessments, but they also gathered some of the qualitative information, like were the kids interested in this? Did the technology work? Were the copies easy to make? All kinds of things to sort of make decisions about what we wanted to do with our selection. And so now I'm going to present the findings. We had 20 programs to start, and immediately, just through using the IMET and Ed Reports, we eliminated 12 programs. If it didn't meet on any of the non-negotiables in the IMET, it was out. If it got through the IMET and Ed Reports, it wasn't, said it wasn't good, it was out. Then we looked at additional programs and we eliminated those that didn't meet some of our district needs. Things like visuals, technology, cohesive structured units that would be compatible with workshop instruction.
I just want to point out the visual was pretty funny on that last slide. I didn't get a chuckle out of that.
I'm glad you let, yeah, you want to go back and look? There it is.
Viruses being weeded out.
I'm a recovering science teacher. I'm a recovering science teacher. So everyday math was in the initial 20 programs that we looked at. Immediately, we learned it did not meet the alignment criteria in the IMET. Everyday math we've been using since 2007 doesn't meet alignment criteria. Then we went to Ed Reports. Okay, let's see what they say. Ed Reports on rigor and mathematical practices does not meet expectation. Focus and coherence partially meets. The overall rating does not meet. So since 2007, we've been using a program that right now is not recommended. Our family survey, again, from January 30th to February 8th, we collected 136 responses. Most of the responses came from Baking Memorial in the middle school. That's how they were allocated. The overall outcome was, for the most part, I'm not going to go through each point, but parents felt that their children understood math, could do the math work at home, felt comfortable doing the math. But we really weren't doing a good job as a district helping families support their children at home with math work. So this was very important for us to bring that into our decision-making for our program. We want to make sure that we're able to help our parents, help our students. Because this past year has shown us, everybody's helping our kids learn. It's not just the teachers. It's a collaborative, collective effort. And we want to make sure that we've got all the bases covered. Which brings me to our recommendation. The recommendation is the series that is sitting on your desks right now, Envision Mathematics 2020 Common Core. And we recommend that for several reasons. It fulfilled the requirements in the IMET. It is aligned to the Common Core math standards, which are the ones that are used to assess our students, whether it's the New Hampshire statewide assessment, the PACE, the SAT. Ed Reports scored it high in all of the areas, so it met expectations, got a pure green light, and it meets our district needs. There are a few sample pages that I included in here, but you've actually got the documents in front of you that you could look through. I know we had people come in and look at the books when we were in our office this week, this past week. But there are areas for intervention. The intervention program is incredibly important in the district. There are supports for enriching students who are ready to move on and go further. There is instruction in here for guided practice, where the teacher works along with students. There's also room for independent practice. I can try this myself. I want to see if I can do this on my own. In-class practice, which is so important, preparations for the high stakes assessments. It's not teaching to the test, but it's really teaching our kids how they ask questions on the test, because a lot of times, those tests put the question in a weird way. That's just weird enough that if the kids don't know how to answer it, it's going to give them the wrong answer. So we want to give them practice in understanding those questions. This was huge for us. Family connection letter, which will go home with every unit, every time we start a new unit. This happens to be multiplication facts. And there's at-home practice that includes examples for parents to use to help their children. Fluency practice. This is what I was referring to earlier as naked math, just practicing your facts. But this is huge, because if you don't know your facts, your brain is too busy calculating and can't go on to the next thing, which would be applying how to use that math. If you're hung up and calculating, you don't have brain space to think. So this is really important. And homework will be part of a regular practice with this program. Students will receive homework to stay fluent. It met Sandborne's needs. The units were cohesive. If it was a multiplication fact unit on facts three, four, five, that's what it was. There wasn't other stuff that was interspersed in there. It's very structured. It will align very nicely with the workshop model. There's skill practice. There are visuals that support our learners. There's real world, purposeful math. So the kids might get a word problem, like you have a new dog and you have to buy fencing. You can make a fence that is eight feet long by four feet wide. How much fence do you need? Things like that. Family support, which you saw, and the technology, which when we piloted the programs, because we hadn't purchased it yet, we were on a limited technology sort of slice that they gave us. But the teachers and students reported that the technology was engaging. It worked, which is huge. Nothing's worse than having something crash on you. And it was interesting. The technology piece is also sort of threefold. Not only is it something for our students to use in the class, students can access it at home for family support. And the technology also provides professional development for our teachers. So if there's a different way to teach something, or it's something brand new, or it's maybe a first or second year teacher that doesn't feel so confident, there's technology in there that will provide professional development for our teachers. The proposal is this. For implementation, upon approval of the board, hopefully tonight, we will be ordering materials immediately. So that we could set up that important summer professional development for our teachers, which would be the first sort of boost of getting them acquainted and acclimated to the program. There would also be ongoing professional development throughout the year at certain points to help them get brought up to speed on other things, go deeper into other things. And next year, we would be doing all sorts of data collection. Two kinds: informally at meetings, discussing what's going on, making sure we're on track, making sure we're pacing appropriately, and also formally looking at student academic achievement and student learning so that we could really get a good understanding of how the program is working for us. So in close, the committee and I truly believe that the Envision program will help us realize the math vision for the district, which is that every student will see themselves as a mathematician. The caveat is, there is no perfect program. But we believe that this is the best program that exists for our students and for our needs right now. And with that, I will take questions from the board.
And I want to apologize really quickly because we skipped over prom and graduation, which we said we would do.
That's okay. We'll get, well, as soon as this is complete, we'll go to prom and graduation for the, thank you for being patient. I did want to ask, could the ISA committee report out on their recommendation after their research? I know folks spent a lot of time reading things and talking to Patty and Donna. So I just wanted to give them an opportunity to kind of share their perspective for the board.
Yeah, I plan to whenever it's convenient for the chair.
Go ahead.
So I'm on the Excellent Student Achievement Committee. I spent a good deal of time with all the paperwork. I've been a bit of a thorn in people's sides in the past and continue to be so on math. I think our math numbers are not anywhere as near acceptable in that we need a new program. I was glad to see that the rating tools actually failed our current math program, because I think it fails, our math program is a fail. And I'm glad to see that the metrics that we're using to assess math programs found the same, the same condition. So I spent some hours with the books. I actually got some homework assigned to me because I had a lot of questions. So I took some of the books home for the weekend. And I came back with a number of questions. So I met with the administration to alleviate some of my concerns. So my concern was, for example, the most efficient way to do multi-digit math and subtraction is with carry the ones and borrow the ones, as we phrased it when I was going through school. And that is initially introduced in the second grade, but really strengthened and hit hard in the fourth grade. And I was concerned with the metrics that we talked about, where it talked about it had to be age-appropriate, and it seemed like it was non-negotiable if you were testing somebody on something that was pre-grade. So if we have kids in second grade that are able to do carry the ones and borrow the ones, that somehow we wouldn't let them do that. And I was assured by the administration and the folks that I met with that that would simply not be the case. And so that we would be pushing for whatever the kids can learn and adopt, that they would be able to learn and adopt, and that we would be able to support them. The other item I was concerned with, that I didn't say, see the times tables as focused as I would have liked to see. Again, it's very easy to create times tables or on the net and everything else. It is part of the core instructions that will be involved, will be with the timetables. As Dr. Haynes just pointed out, homework would be a core part of the structure. The other area that I had concerns with was there's a lot of projects in this program that aren't particularly math-related. And I had great concerns about that, but I was informed by the administration that wasn't even piloted as something that is part of the core area, that wouldn't be the focus area. There are extraneous items. To me, they're distracting. They take time away from actual math. So those are my concerns. And the administration was able to alleviate all those concerns with how the program works and how they planned on implementing it. So what did I see that I liked? There's an awful lot that I saw that I liked. It was very engaging. There was algebra in kindergarten, so pretty basic, nine plus what equals 10? But they start talking about it, and they start talking about by first grade. They're talking to the kids about doing algebra. There's a lot of people that have mental blocks about algebra when they get into the older grades. It's, oh, I can't do algebra. If they're made to understand they've been doing it all along since they were in first grade, then it's a lot easier to think, well, yeah, I can do algebra. That's just part of what I do. I like that. I looked at the sixth grade details in the sixth grade, volume one, so first semester. The algebra levels in the sixth grade are far exceed what we're doing today throughout the whole sixth grade period. And I think Chair Dutton pointed out that they're actually exceeding the beginning of the seventh grade in terms of what some of the details are.
Yeah, at the end of the seventh grade, they're doing a lot of the stuff right now that would be put forth in this at the beginning of sixth grade. So definitely, they're pushing forward a little faster.
And it definitely would lead us to an eighth grade algebra, which is part of the plan. So I fully support this program. I think that it will do a great benefit to the kids. In the end, it's going to be the teachers interacting with the kids on the new program. And for those kids that can excel in math, this will enable them to excel in math, and they will not be held back from this. For those kids that are just doing a normal job in math, it will ensure that they get to competency levels at the grades where they're supposed to be at the competency levels, to lead us to be able to do eighth grade math. And for those that were struggling, we have our intervention programs to make sure that we can get those kids up into a competency level. So I wholeheartedly support this. I think it hands down clobbers everyday math. I don't even think it's a close comparison, so I'm all in favor of it. And I kind of needled Dr. Haynes by saying, well, yeah, we could start this on May 1st. And then I ducked.
Now, now, come on. All I did was look at you, but that's okay.
But those are my comments, anyway.
So I like to make decisions based on data and experiences. I like to make informed decisions. So I was really interested in the conversations with other districts who have used this, any information that we could get from them. And so I encouraged, or I spoke, I took some time to talk to Dr. Haynes and Ms. Donnell about the calls that they had made. And I was really encouraged by the conversations they had with other districts. They called at least three, or they reported on at least three that they had called. And one, there were, there was one that sort of was implementing it while they were remote, and they weren't taking full advantage of all the, whatever you.
The manipulative. They were very hung up. New York State has not been in person, and she was very hung up on not being in person. So, yeah.
But the reports were positive. This is a program that has a history. It's not brand new, which I was kind of leery about. There was the other program, Reveal, is only in beta right now. That was the second choice that they chose to pilot. So, you know, I feel pretty comfortable. I was very encouraged by Ms. Dutton and Mr. Fitzpatrick's review of the materials. I didn't spend as much time on the materials. But I was really glad that they talked about how the curriculum covered materials that you had, you just mentioned, what we're learning now in seventh grade, our kids at the end of seventh grade, is covered in the beginning of the sixth grade curriculum here. And that's important to me. I really want our kids to be prepared to take algebra by eighth grade. That was, that was important to everyone. That was one of the sort of non-negotiables for me. So I'm definitely excited, supportive of this. I'm really looking forward to getting going with it.
All right, we just have to.
I'm six feet away and I've had my shots.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, you know.
I'm not the health officer anymore, so.
Still have to follow the school, is Mr. Broderick.
Set an example. So I did, you know, I sat down like Jamie did. I went through every book for every grade that they had there. The biggest things for me were the engagement. You open up the pages and you're kind of excited to, oh, what is this about? You know, it's not two-dimensional. It draws you in, which I think is huge. I found out after reviewing all of the books that my nephew was part of one of the pilot groups. So I got to talk to him a little bit about it, and he said the same thing. He's like, yeah, I really don't like math, but I did not want to do this, you know, which for a third grade boy is pretty good. You know, I did like the fact that when you are going through this, it does look like it's fairly easy for a substitute to pick up the book and follow through and continue the curriculum. So whether it's somebody that's there for a couple of days or somebody that's there as a longer-term sub, somebody's out of maternity leave, something like that, have our subs be able to really kind of pick up and follow along. Plus, they'll have the PD available to them through the technology. The visuals in the books were great. I liked that the manipulatives that the kids are going to be using are actually represented in more of a 3D picture. So the kids can see, ooh, I have that. It's over there. I can get it. I can use it, and I can put it together. And that granted, that's more at a lower level, but that's where we really need to get the kids engaged. We need to get them excited. We need to get them really loving and loving math. So I thought that was a big thing there. I've done a lot of research over the years, learning about different learning styles, how to approach with different, different students at different levels. And I felt like this hit a lot of the marks. Like we said, you know, it helps the learners that are struggling. It helps your average learners. And it helps to excel those that are ready to go beyond. The multisensory approach was a big deal for me because that's great for a lot of learners. And then, like everybody said, you know, I, you and, you know, Jade and Tommy are both end of seventh grade. And what they're doing right now, if you go to the sixth grade book, beginning of the, you know, the first half of the year, they're doing the same stuff. So it's nice to see that we're not kind of dragging our feet, you know. I don't, I don't want to, you know, cram too much in at the same time. But I felt like it was a little bit more appropriate, the way it was being put forward. And then, another thing that may seem silly to some, but the books for photocopying for homework, classwork, things like that, the pages are extremely clean. They're nice. They're going to photocopy well, which is huge when you're trying to get a kid to do the work. It's not messy. It's not, what is this? I can't tell. It's going to be a lot easier for the students to understand what is in front of them. It's also going to be really easy for the families to, when they see it at home, be able to take it. for the families to, when they see it at home, be able to take it, look at it and go, oh, okay, this makes sense. You're not trying to read through, is that on this page or was that on the page behind it? Cause it's coming through. So that was a little note, but I thought that was important as well. Um, so I at first, you know, wasn't sure how I felt about it, but after going in and really looking at everything and digging into everything, I feel extremely confident in moving forward with this program. So.
You want a motion?
Uh, or if anyone else has any questions.
I've got questions.
All right. I guess do we need a motion first?
Do a motion.
I'll move to approve the program as presented.
Second. Okay. Uh, now discussion.
So I support this. I think it's long overdue. I just got a question. I, I've gone, I've watched the ISA meetings. And I, I was very impressed by the amount of effort that went into this. But there's certain edut speak terms that I need more definition.
Yep.
The IMET alignment.
Yes.
Alignment to what?
So the IMET, which is the acronym for whatever. It was developed, it was developed so that educators could make sense of what the common core was asking. And so those standards, which are the standards that we use in the state, which are the standards that are used to develop, like the SAT, the New Hampshire statewide assessment, it's looking to make sure that if the standard says, you know, addresses multiplication facts on the four times tables, that it's actually in there. It's just making sure it's, it matches. So that's what it talks about.
So it's alignment with common core?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, like, like I said, I, this, this is long overdue and historically, if you look back, I want to thank Dr. Pam Brown's, uh, mantra that she had for years when she was on the board. How does this impact student outcomes? And this is a great move forward in my opinion. Back then there was really no appetite for addressing this issue. And it's just, I think it's great that we're doing it. There are other school board members that have been advocating for this for a long time. And I also want to thank, uh, the superintendent and Dr. Haynes, Tammy and, and Dawn and Jamie for the hard work they've done on ISA committee. For bringing this, this solution forward and vetting it so thoroughly. And I also, in the presentation, saw a commitment to monitor it. It's not just, you're going to roll this out and then that's it. You're going to be assessing it on a regular basis and tweaking it and fixing it as it needs to be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And I know the committee worked hard, so they'll be glad to hear that.
And thank you, Donna. I know she's hiding in the corner over there. Thank you for all your hard work. All right. Yeah.
I have two questions. One, um, the book said, one of the books on your slides said K through five? This is a K, this is K through six, right?
Yes.
Said K through five. Is sixth grade a different book or something? I just, I don't know. I just.
So I don't know which slide it was, but we were looking at, um, different programs from different things and it might've been talking to a different program, but this is, this is a K through eight program in the sixth grade. Actually, the way it's parsed out by the publisher, it's K through five. And then they, it's the way that they market it. So it's their marketing. It has nothing to do with continuity. It's a marketing piece.
Okay. Yeah. One of the slides, it said K, it said K through five on it.
Okay.
Note of that. My second question is, um, so I hear a lot of talk about how they're doing, Dawn made a comment about stuff that they're teaching in seventh grade. Now they're going to start in sixth grade. Is there a plan to, um, shorten that gap or close that gap? How are, how are, how are the kids automatically? You know, if the kids are already behind right now, is there a plan of how they're going to be able to catch up to where this curriculum is there?
I'm glad you're asking because what that, what you're referring to is something we talked to in edut speak is an implementation dip. When you start something new, no matter what you start new, there's always this weird adjustment period. Even for yourselves, when you get a new car, it's like, oh God, wait a minute. Where's the wiper blade? What, the, the radio control is where you have to adjust. And so the adjustment period for starting up a new program could take a year of us figuring out, okay, the kids are here. They should be here. And then that's where the intervention program comes in. And a lot of those other supports that would come in where we would have to be going in and addressing the need right now. And then you add to that, the fact that we've been in this funky pandemic and this weird situation now for a year. You've got another sort of a gap. So we've got a lot of sort of backfill to do. But by backfilling, what we're going to do is look to see what do we have in front of us right now? What's the next step? And we're going to get them to the next step. And if we do that systematically, instead of panicking and going, oh my God, there's too much. We will get those kids moved up, but we, but being able to assess it, look at it, figure it out and work together, we will do it. So yes.
So maybe I'm, I just just throwing this out like kind of an example. So the fifth grade class next year, you just might have to start them at fourth grade if that, if that's where they might be.
We might have to.
Try to pick up the gap from there, but you'll just kind of, you'll start them at fourth grade if.
If it's necessary, right. But there's also materials that are built in there that are for like remediation or kids who need extra support. So you might start them with that and they might catch on to it really quick. Because they probably should know that anyway. It's not like you're asking them to do stuff that they can't do. But there will be some sort of adjusting. So it's not going to be like this. Okay. Everybody's happy. It's, there's going to be some adjusting, but I know that our teachers and with the professional development that they're going to offer as well as what Donna and I have been working on with other providers outside of this whole program, we're going to make sure that our teachers can get our kids where they need to be. But thank you for asking that because that's important. It's not, it's not all honey blossoms and roses when you, yeah.
Great. And I'm not at all upset that they're going to be ahead of where they are. I'm just wondering how do you?
No, that, that's an awesome question. Thank you.
For the, uh, districts that you spoke to, what did they like about it? And how long have they been using it and what outcomes have they seen since they implemented?
So we cold, we cold called across the country districts to see who would actually talk to us. We spoke to, the best, um, information we got was from the district that we spoke to in Pennsylvania. That they liked that it was engaging for the kids and they had like a 70% free and reduced lunch rate. So it's much higher than ours. The kids were engaged. The parents were able to help at home. They liked that. They liked that it was consistent. That's what they really liked. The folks we spoke to in New York, like I said, she was just really upset. They weren't in person. I kind of just let that be. We spoke to a district out in Oregon on the west coast. They have a different format out there in that state where they have to go off of what the state approves. And so they only use this for kindergarten. And they love it because the kids are really invested in it. The teachers find that it's easy to follow the lessons. So those are the things that they said, none of the districts we spoke to, nor any of the information we got from in-state, whether it's Hampstead, Timberlane, Derry, or up in Gilmanton said, oh God, don't touch this. It, it, there wasn't anybody who said that to us. So there was a lot of conversations like that. The scores went up, the Pennsylvania district with the high free and reduced lunch. The first year they started using it, they saw a huge jump in student test scores. And then for two years they saw that, which actually mirrors, um, a, a report that we used, that we read through, that I also shared with folks on ISA that looked at the 2009 publication of this program that talked about the same thing. They followed it for two years in 2009. And the kids did better. So that's what we heard.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Uh, so I guess we will go for a vote. Uh, all in favor? All right. Uh, unanimous?
No.
No. Oh, Pete, I didn't see you.
Going to abstain.
Okay. All right. So, um.
I can explain or I can tell you later.
So that's, uh, six yeses and Mr. Broderick is an abstention.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the committee, I want to thank you for your support of all the hard work we've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I will agree with.
All right. And now we get to talk about prom and graduation.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Thanks, everybody for having us, having me back today. I know a couple of weeks ago, we talked a little bit. Cursory overview of how we were working on some of our end of year plans. And the two that we wanted to come back with some more details for you on were prom and graduations. So we're going to start off talking about prom. I'm going to be yielding my time to, uh, Ms. Abby Regis, who's going to come up here and walk through things for you. Now, very, very interesting young lady with a very difficult task this year to try to figure out how to pull off an event like prom in the middle of a global pandemic with changing conditions and a lot of opinions on both sides of what that should look like. And as a, a, a student leader herself and a leader in training, having to set aside some of maybe her personal beliefs of what she'd like to see and really think about the greater good. So she was appointed by the junior class to put together a proposal for prom and work on prom. This goes all the way back to last year. So of course it's been a, it's been a challenge. So I'm excited for Abby to walk you through what she's got. We're just going to make sure that the clicker works. You just have to advance it that way. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right.
So hi, I'm Abby Regis. I'm the head of the junior class prom committee for this year. So obviously we've been working on how to hold prom safely for our students and still let them have a really fun experience after a really difficult year. So our goal is to have it on June 12th, which will be after graduation. Cause I know that was a big thing for the seniors is no one wants to miss their graduation if something should happen with contact tracing. The hopeful time is five to nine and it will be at the high school here. It will be for juniors and seniors with teacher chaperones and police, uh, present for an event that size and that type of event. We want to have food, dancing, a photographer and entertainment as well. We will do the promenade outside the high school. And obviously, like I said, safety is our first and most important priority. So we will be doing COVID screening, very similar to how we do for the high school and for other types of events. We will be doing screening by a chaperone, temperature checks, and there are some requirements for students to be allowed in. They can't be experiencing, experiencing any COVID symptoms. They obviously can't have COVID and come, uh, traveling. We, we hope to have restricted somewhat. And you can't come if you're waiting on a test result because if you come and then you tell us I have COVID, that will be a big problem. So students must give their name and contact information when buying a ticket. A lot of that will already be supplied by the school as well for our students. We are asking that anyone who would come tries to track their symptoms and isolate as much as possible two weeks leading up just for safety. Masks will be required and the school approved masks for any student that comes to school. There will be no slow dancing, um, just for social distance purposes. And students will be contact traced by a color grouping, which will be explained more in the upcoming slides. And we want to stagger arrival and dismissal so that there's not a huge rush of people in the doorways. So students will be split up into A and B groups and each of those groups will be split up into color groups just to prevent should contact tracing become necessary. We're not contact tracing 200 kids. And now you have it, 200 kids from Sanborn all have been contact traced. It'll be smaller groups to keep kids safer. The students will make their color groups with their friends, whoever they want two weeks before and a list of what color and letter group you're in will be posted a week before. Changes can be made, not preferable. And students will have a wristband with their, uh, letter and color group, which will help chaperones know if they're not where they're supposed to be at the moment. So if this should happen, we have, uh, schedule for the night, including a group A and a group B schedule that students will be aware of before showing up at prom, including dinner, entertainment in the auditorium and dancing in the gym. Promenade would be before from five to six and it would be on the bus loop. As I said, staggered arrival and we would hope to live stream it and have family and friends able to watch social distance. We know parents, it's very important to see their kids on their prom night. Dining would take place in the cafeteria, catered food. And we want to do catered instead of like a buffet style with servers. That way we don't have 20 something, 50 something kids all standing at a buffet, which wouldn't be social distanced. Students will be able to sit at a table with their color group and masks would need to stay on unless actively eating. We would hold dancing in the gym or for kids who that's their time slot, but they don't feel comfortable dancing or they don't like dancing. We will still have the graduation tent at that time. So that would be a resource for us to use as an outside option for kids who don't feel comfortable with the gym. Music will be DJed and students may dance in sectioned off areas with their color group. Like I said, no slow dancing, unfortunately this year. Masks must stay on and social distance will be monitored lightly by chaperones. Entertainment, we hope to have in the auditorium and students can either sit or stand to watch with their color groups. And we've looked into and talked to students with surveys, um, possible entertainment options, including a hypnotist, open mic, which was surprisingly very popular or like a comedian. And that's my last slide. Obviously safety is our first priority. We want everyone to have fun, but it needs to be a safe option with everything going on this year.
That's, that's great, Abby. I'm sure the board will have some questions. I don't know if any of our other secrets, so not all of our students are here necessarily to speak to prom, but would it be all right if there are any students that wanted to add anything that Abby might have? I think she hit on it. So awesome.
I think Pete was first and then I saw.
How many kids would be in each color group?
So we want kids to be able to spend the time with their friends. Obviously that'll be very important to them, but we will have a limit on each color group. That'll also depend on how open things are. Obviously things have been changing rapidly. So depending on the recent COVID guidelines and so it could be anywhere from like one to a higher number like 20 or somewhere in between. And it'll depend on each group. You could have groups with two people or groups with a higher number.
Thank you.
I, I'm sure you figured this out, but how do I determine what color group I'm in? And I'm more, I'm sure the parents out there or somebody's out there is asking the same question. You know, I don't want my girlfriend being in a different color group. My wife maybe.
Yeah. So that would be a part of like the ticket buying process. You can talk to your friends as you're buying tickets and figure out, and if obviously, like I said, changes can be made. We're going to have that like bud room where you can get in touch with our class advisor or get in touch with myself or Mr. Stack or whoever to say, hey, I didn't realize that I'm in a different group and we will try our very best to make sure everyone is where they want to be as much as, uh, possible with the numbers.
So first, I just wanted to say, this is really, a really well-done presentation. I'm very impressed. Very detailed. It's obvious that you put a lot of time and thought. It feels like you've thought of everything. I was wondering when my son had his prom or one of them, it rained. So I just, how much of this is, uh, going to be outdoors? And I know you said the promenade was going to be outdoors. If it rains, will he just not have it or is there another plan?
So promenade almost always takes place outside every year. Unfortunately, if it rains, there's not much we can do about that. There's not really a COVID safe way to have everybody, including parents, um, parading through the hallway. So promenade might be something that gets lost should it rain. We do have.
What was I going to say? Or it might become something where just, we could do it inside, but the parents might just have to watch through like a live stream kind of thing.
And then the graduation tent is outside for kids who maybe don't feel comfortable with dancing. Or they don't like dancing. And if that should happen, we still have the dancing option in the gym and everything else is indoors. But perhaps we could look into other spaces in the school. Obviously we have a ton of rooms here. Um, but perhaps we could look into other spaces in the school. Obviously we have a ton of rooms here. Um, such as the mini gym we have as well, could be a possible option for socially distanced space for people to be away from the slightly more crowded dancing.
Thank you. I will pray for no rain.
Yes, thank you.
A simple question. Do you have a timeline for when you have to get all this executed by and when people have to sign up for their groups and get tickets? Deadlines?
So we hope to have no more than two weeks, maybe three for buying tickets. Um, just so that we can have our numbers and know, okay, we need to spend this much on catering. We need to get this much, many tables, this many of many of our resources. And obviously catering will have a specific, um, deadline for when they need to know our numbers. Just so that they can have that, we need to know how many, if we need servers, which we're hoping to have parent volunteers for. Um, we'd have to have that all figured out, all of our numbers. So it'll definitely depend on if we get approval tonight. But we want to get tickets out as soon as possible so that students can be more aware of what's going on and how they should set up the rest of their year and their plans.
So I'll echo, uh, Tammy's comments, a very professional, uh, PowerPoint setup, uh, information and a very professional presentation. A couple of questions. How many do you expect to get in total?
So our top numbers, we have about 175 ish tops, I think in some of the grades. Um, a little lower in, in one of them. So we aren't looking at more than at very max, should every single junior and senior in the school come? A little over 300, but a typical prom, I think in past years has been closer to 240 ish. Um, and obviously this year with COVID restrictions, uh, kids coming to prom will be up too, if they feel safe coming and if their parents are feel safe with sending their kid to prom. So that will lower numbers slightly. So hopefully we get a higher number like 200. Um, but we will have a minimum number for if we're holding a prom. We're not going to hold something with 30 kids.
One of the things I noticed on the rules as to who can attend and who cannot attend, that's going to end up being self-reporting basis. I assume it's going to have to be because there's no way to know if somebody has been out or about or what have you. Um, so this is going to be difficult for you guys that are on the committee running this. You'll be under pressure and you'll have people coming to you saying, hey, I know so and so was this or that. So there's going to be a lot of, um, a lot of burden on the people that are putting this together. Uh, you guys will just have to, uh, stick together and work together and get the students to, to be working together to pull this off. Uh, I, I support it. I, I vote, uh, going in, but you, you've got yourself some challenges here in a challenging time. You certainly seem to be up to being able to manage it. Um, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I just have another clarification question. There'll be no outside, only Sanborn juniors and seniors.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a great question. That was brought up before and there aren't, we will not be allowing any external um, guests like we have in the past from other districts.
So if my girlfriend is at Timberland, she can't come.
She can't come.
Okay. You got a new girlfriend, Pete.
I usually get one every couple of weeks. Anyway, I'm in high school. What do you think?
I just wanted to echo and say, um, if you need a reference for your college applications, I would be happy to write one about your excellent presenting skills, your public speaking and your, um, poise during this presentation. It really is, um, some of the best I've seen from a student ever. So I just want you to hear that as praise for your hard work and I, I know how hard you've worked on this. Um, so I, I am glad to hear that the board is asking a lot of really good questions and I just wanted the students to hear and for you to hear that this, this combined with graduation has been two of the most heart wrenching things for me to work through as a superintendent in a pandemic. And I, I was speaking to Mr. Stack on the phone a few weeks ago and I said, well, what if you had them attend prom in pods? You know, in small groups and he said, you're, that's really funny because just wait until the presentation. So they, the kids had already gone there. I mean, I'm so proud of you all for thinking creatively and outside of the box to try to solve complex problems. It's excellent.
Thank you very much.
Say more. Um, I'm just curious on your, um, one of your first slides, like your COVID rules, regulations, you had, cannot have left the state in the last two weeks. I'm curious as to it, there seems to have been a lot of restrictions that have been lifted. And now you can travel throughout the country without having quarantine. And in particular too, with us being so close to Massachusetts, I'm just wondering, um, if there's a reason why, especially as I'm, I wouldn't be surprised if some people have a hairdresser in April. So I'll just.
Obviously we're gonna, um, adjust our restrictions. This has been in the working for a while. So we're adjusting our restrictions according to state guidelines and obviously luckily things have been slowly opening up.
Yeah.
And we're gonna adjust this as much as possible. We want to give people as much as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Um, going into this and hopefully things have loosened up a lot in, by the time we get to June 12th.
Um, so do you expect, and I'm not sure if you can answer this question, do you, does the board need to reapprove this if you, if you decide that they don't, if people can leave the state, does this have to go back to the board again?
No.
We approve this and then whatever changes as things change, you guys move, they move forward with? Okay.
Yeah, thanks for asking. It's a great question. I'll, I'll take that one. Um, the, it's kind of like our, our, what was at one time called our reopening plan, which I think we've now named our COVID response document, you know, it, as the rules change with the feds and the state, we allow the different groups in the district to adjust quickly. So for example, recently we had a class at one of the elementary schools that needed to quarantine and the quarantine rule changed the day after we found out about the case and we brought them all right back because we're not going to wait, you know, we want to be as nimble as possible, but that's a really great question. I think that what, what the board is approving is the, um, the, the sequence of events, the three different locations, the social distancing, the, um, students being in cohorts, the, the format of the, the, what we have been lovingly calling the promposal.
Yeah.
So you're, you're approving the overall format, but the specifics of quarantining and all that may change between.
Okay.
It could be two days before that it changes and we need to look at it again. So I just want you to know there is a dynamic component built in.
Okay.
I think Pete had his.
Yeah, yeah. Um, after prom, that has nothing to do with the school, the school district. It's a private, separate entity.
That's right.
So as far as those tweaks at the last, you know, as things evolve in terms of regulations and all that, you're also working with a faculty advisor, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, we're planning, we're trying to plan for the worst case scenario. Obviously we want things to get better as quickly as possible. We want to be out of this pandemic as quickly as possible. Um, but we're very aware that that is not always possible. And we want to get as much as we can with the current safe situation.
Just for clarification, I, I think that Tom's point is, um, the adjustments would come consistent with the guidelines from the state. So there's not any anticipation.
Yes.
Of, hey, we're making adjustment. The state's only allowed this much, but hey, we're going this far.
Right, right.
It's got to be within the guidelines of the state.
Yes, and the feds. It depends on where the rules coming from. It, the, the way we adjust is based on, um, we, we never do, it's just like following the law. We do what, no less than what the minimum expected standard is. We can't do, um, less than that. We often do more. So requiring that people be, not travel out of the state for, for two weeks. They could theoretically put that into play because it's a more strict requirement than what the, the state guideline is, but Mr. Stack will be working with me and, and
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's funny because Mr. Fitzpatrick said, well, you may have some, some kids trying to kind of maneuver or whatever. And I just wanted to say to you, please don't take that on, send that to Mr. Stack. That's why he makes the big bucks, right? Like, like, don't, don't take that on and don't take on changing these guidelines. Let him guide you with that because then it's not on you because you should focus on your relationships with your friends during your junior and senior prom. I, I don't want anyone to be mad at each other over quarantining rules or this, that and the other. Let, let the, the professional adults handle those decisions.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. Thank you. I think you did a fabulous job.
Yeah.
Very much.
Can the board vote to approve?
Appreciate. Appreciate everyone's.
We get a motion? I think you made a motion. Did we do the motion?
Thank you, but we didn't vote yet.
You didn't vote.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, all in favor? All right.
Thank you.
It's unanimous this time. I got it right. All right. And then graduation.
So can we also take a motion to maybe hire her somewhere in the school?
Yeah, she's.
Again, you know, I, I reiterate with Abby, it was a very, it's a, it's a tough job to do because again, she had to set aside some of her personal opinions of what she thought we should do and really think about what makes the most for the organization and the class. And she, she did a fantastic job. So now we're going to switch gears and talk a little bit about graduation. So again, two weeks ago, I kind of gave you a little bit of a walkthrough of where we were at. Now with graduation, what you're going to see tonight is actually a different plan. So as we were hoping for, the day that we presented was also the day that the state of Massachusetts released some guidelines that were very helpful for us in coming up with a possible, um, different graduation option than what we did last year. Last, uh, last time I was here, I spoke to you about our worst case scenario. We could always do what we did last year and this is what it would look like. But we've been talking for a few weeks about what it might look like to try to do some sort of a limited capacity, socially distanced, outside live event for people. And so that's what you're going to be hearing tonight. Again, working with a group of students who have been very instrumental in helping us work through some of the details. And I am going to yield my time to another outstanding student presenter, Mariana DiMillo. Mariana aspires to a career in civil engineering. So this is a great project for her right up her alley. She's going to walk you through the plans for what it might look like to do such a graduation. You good?
Oh, yep, that should be it.
Hi, I'm Mariana and I'm a senior here. So I was heavily involved with graduation. So what an overview will look like for our prom is the senior graduating class is 175 students. Um, and the football field can hold 322 10 by five foot squares. Now that is obviously over the 175 squares that we need. So, um, with six feet in between these squares in all directions will provide a safe social distancing and walkways if need be. And the graduates will also be on the football field with a total of 180 squares. Now that gives leeway for students who need certain people with them and so on. Um, again, with three feet in between for social distancing and that is what we do in school. So outside with masks will be just as beneficial. So this is a two scale drawing of what the football field and track look like. And as you can see, the 190 boxes are labeled and that is well over what we need for the graduating class of 175. And you see the empty boxes in the back is reaching 322 boxes, which is at admin discretion, we can use for blended families or if we need to overflow, people can be in their own separate box and still distanced. Um, and upfront you see the stage and what is the graduation area where the graduates will be seated. And there are three by three boxes that are three feet social distancing. And depending on the acoustics of the booth, the football field booth, um, is where we put the stage. And if we need to get more speakers, that will be dependent on what it sounds like out there. So we can have clear hearing of everything. Again, the family squares will be 10 feet by five feet and each family will have six feet social distancing in all directions. In the boxes, we are only allowing six people per box and we will provide those chairs. Um, and again, at admin discretion, we will be allowing families to have two boxes. Um, and the graduates will also be sat on the field. This is what it'll look like, just as reference with the six feet in all directions. Um, which will provide proper social distancing and walkways again. So for graduate, graduate squares, we have that three feet by three feet square, three feet in all directions, which will allow a safe social distancing while sitting there and while walking up to the stage to get your certificate and diplomas. Um, this will, we will also have space in between the stage and the front row of graduates for photographers and videographers. So they can have their own safe social distancing area. And this is an up close of what the graduates area will look like. And that space between the stage and the graduates is where those videographers and photographers will be. Again, obviously because it's graduation, everyone will be sat in alphabetical order. And this is an up close, what it'll look like with three feet in every single direction, providing that safe, social distancing and safe walking area to the stage. And these are our attention areas. We have a couple of risks, um, but they're all taken care of. So risk number one is if family members are incapable of getting down to those fields, we can drive, they can drive their own car down to the field and walk from a flat surface rather than going down that hill. Number two, um, if people cannot make this event, um, we will provide those second boxes. But if they can't make it, we will also be live streaming it for those families and friends who want to watch but can't make it. Um, number three is again, the acoustics. If we need the booth, if we need speakers, we'll all be dependent on what it sounds like from the football field booth. And risk number four is bad weather.
Yeah. So we didn't, we didn't write anything here yet because we didn't want to pigeonhole ourselves into something. Um, I have a couple of ideas for bad weather. I mean, really bad weather can mean a number of different things from a chance of a drizzle to complete downpour. So some of that we can still mitigate and use the field for. Some of it, we may have to retreat to either our backup graduation plan that we used last year or something where maybe the graduates stay in the gymnasium and the parents watch from the cars and then come in when their child comes across the stage. So they would still have that opportunity to see that. So we're going to still work through that piece of it. We've got some time with that. Of course we, we track the weather and we start trying to make some of those decisions of what we're going to do a couple of days ahead. Cause of course we need some time to plan, but by all accounts, our goal would be to do graduation that night, rain or shine, so that we can, everybody can plan for that.
Question about the weather. The field has a, is known for being wet.
Yep.
There's a lot of rain beforehand, even though it's not raining that, at that time, what's, is there a plan for that?
Yeah. So I didn't, I'm glad you mentioned that because that would all be factored into whether or not we may have to call it a couple of days early and go with the indoor plan, even if it's going to be sunny that day. Because now we know we've just had a few days of rain. So luckily we have a couple of in-house meteorologists that can give us about the best we have at a chance for being able to predict that.
And this is what the schedule of the night will look like. And do you want to talk about that?
All right. So, um, at 4:45 PM, we're going to have graduates and families at the old seminary campus, uh, for, to start the car parade and, um, there'll be two cars per family and they enter campus from the church street side. And once that begins, um, at 5:00 PM, the parade will proceed from the seminary to the high school campus. At 5:30 PM, uh, the parade will end. Police will assist with parking cars while graduates enter the school to begin a procession with backpipes and the family will report to the football field. At 5:45 PM, the procession will ensue with the backpipe band. Uh, diplomas will be given out on stage and the event will be broadcasted live for those at home who couldn't make it or the families who exceeded the limit of their squares. Um, I put undetermined time here because I don't know exactly how long it will take, but at the end of graduation, graduates, families will safely leave the field and the event will be over.
The, uh, the state of Massachusetts advises to try to make your graduation shorter if you can. So we do not know yet whether or not the band or the chorus are going to be performing at this. That's another logistical piece. We have to work out. There's just other parameters at play. And Mr. Ambrose had said he's going to cut his speech from 10 pages down to six. So that will, that will.
Still too long.
Pages or sentences? Uh, well, I don't know. He never lets me see it ahead of time. So I never know, but
I don't know what it's going to be.
On, on a non-COVID year, graduation would typically end in the ballpark of 7:45. We're going to aim for about 7:15 to 7:30. So for, for people for planning purposes, um, we're looking at about an hour and a half event roughly on the field with or without the, the music component.
And this will be the overall rules, again, changing with COVID guidelines to the state of New Hampshire. So we can stay safe. The tickets, each family will have six tickets for their box with provided six chairs. Um, an extra box will be given with those extenuating circumstances like blended families. Or if you have a wheelchair that can't fit in the box, you will be provided that at admin discretion. Um, and the box assignments will be a lottery system. So it's not biased or unfair. Um, and that will allow, um, everyone to be sat in a safe order. So they know exactly where they're sitting and they can be given a ticket with, say we do row A seat 75, you know exactly where row A is. Now you just have to walk to your 75 seat. Um, and the social distance requirements will be strict into the state of New Hampshire. Um, as long as everyone cooperates and understands that they have to follow the rules or they might have to leave. So, any questions?
Uh, the boxes, what delineates the box? Is it like a line? The boxes, what delineates the boxes in like a line strips like on a football game?
Yeah, so it'll just be like paint on a football field. They will have them provided for us.
Thank you.
First off, I want to say I'm extremely impressed that you guys went down and measured this with this effort. Like that is amazing. So great job. For the leap, for the procession and the leaving, are you going to stagger people in so it's not like a mass rush leaving?
Yeah, so there'll be police officers here anyway, because we are doing the parade. So they'll be making sure that parking is safe and everyone's there. So with it being in alphabetical order from the start with the parade, we will have it so everyone parks and they'll get there at a certain times. It'll probably be like 10 people per time coming into the parking lot, parking, getting out of the car and going. Just because the line's so long with 175 people that are allowed two cars in the parade. So that will naturally stagger the time period. And if need be, we'll have people taking tickets that will stagger that time.
And what about when leaving? Will you stack, will you stagger?
Yeah, so it'll be, obviously if people graduate and they want to leave, they can, because we're not going to stop them. Instead you have to stay, but we'll have that making sure that you'll see. And we'll do like last to enters first to leave because they were waiting that whole time.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to, I, I don't know what's in the air tonight, but that's a tie for the excellent presentation board this evening. Really, I, I, you know, I met with you all about graduation and I really appreciate the hard work that you've all done to, to do this. And I also appreciate the fact that you were all very candid about your communication. I asked the group, do you, what do you really want? And please don't leave this meeting and then talk about it and post it on social media that you didn't share what you really wanted because we need to solve the problem. And they did, they said, this is what they want. So I want the board to hear that the kids really, really want this. And I just wanted you to know that I completely support it. It's outdoors, it's socially distanced. It's another example of we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, so we're rounding a corner. I feel comfortable with this occurring, the way that they are portraying it. I do want to make sure that the board is aware of what the rain plan is sometime in the next four weeks or so. So we don't want to leave the rain plan to the last minute because we want parents to know what the rain plan is prior to the event. And we did talk about, well, what do we do about the weather? And I explained that it is virtually impossible to tell 175 families that we're going to move graduation to Saturday. It just doesn't work that way for families. It's too complicated. There's so many different factors, work schedules and people traveling and all these different things that occur. So we did agree on, on one piece, which is that it has to be in the same time block, regardless of which modality we use. We also talked about that, that if it is indoor in the auditorium, that it would, you've already started to come up with some great ideas about the way to do that. I'm just asking Mr. Stack, if the board approves this tonight, that you would come up with the rain day plan and bring it back at the first meeting in May?
Yep, which, which, which makes perfect sense. And again, we're trying to take this in pieces just because there's an awful lot to it. And we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with what we have. Couple of things that were not in the presentation that I'll just point out. Graduation is a two-part event. We have a class day in the morning that we are still planning to do. We will run that during the day so that all of our students can participate. But we are going to kind of use the same model we're going to use for spring carnival, where the, the graduates will be in the gym by themselves. We'll live stream it so that the underclassmen can watch it with their advisories in their classrooms. But everyone's able to participate in that. We'll still have our senior lunch that I talked about a couple of weeks ago. If the band and chorus don't perform at the evening event because of logistics, they would be performing in some capacity at the earlier events. And actually this plan itself gives us a whole other set of abilities to consider some outdoor performance venues. Because I'm meeting today with our music teachers and we very, very, very much would like to find a way to be able to have some of our kids in the district be able to perform for their families. It's a really important piece. So this could serve as a model for that. We could bring something back to the board to look at for some of those music performances as a later piece as well, but.
Yeah, it's similar to Superintendent Ambrose's comment. Very well thought out, very reasoned and very convincing in, in terms of a presentation. You know, would that I was as good as you guys are now when I was your age? I mean, it just very, very impressive. So again, you'll have my support on this.
Thank you.
All right, I want to say thank you so, so very much as parent of a senior. This is awesome. So thank you. You guys did a great job.
Don't cry, John.
I'm trying not to. You will have my full support on this. Thank you very, very much for all the hard work.
You're welcome.
Okay, we need a motion. Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? And it's unanimous. And to go back, point of order, we did not have an actual motion on prom. So we need to go back and actually. Phyllis didn't have a record. I don't remember an actual motion. I think we went straight from Abby presenting to discussion. I think we skipped the motion. So if we could just go back and do a quick motion and take a revote, that would be great.
Move to approve.
To approve prom as presented by. For, yes, prom, yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay, great. Tammy, second.
That was Tammy.
Tammy. Okay, all in favor? And unanimous. All right, thank you. Okay, Matt, you are up.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the school board to reaffirm policy.
Can you hold this one second? I know you all probably would love to sit here and hear about policy DFA investments. And you are welcome to do so, but I don't want you to feel awkward about leaving. So I just thought I'd open the door for the kids who are being very respectful and sitting there thinking.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys. Have a wonderful night.
You can hang if you want to, Jen.
No, 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 go for it, Jen. You'll stay.
It'll be a while. They kicked me out.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the school board to reaffirm policy DFA investments under state statute RSA 90, 197 23A. The school board has authority to authorize the school, the treasurer to invest funds that are not immediately available for expenditure. It's good practice to approve this policy on an annual basis, which is also recommended by our auditors. The last time this policy was approved was 2008. And so far, I'm not aware of any changes that need to be incorporated in this policy.
Seems like a long year.
Yeah.
Move to reaffirm. Second.
All right, any discussion?
I agree.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right, the next one is mine as well. This is the tuition rates for Fremont and, and any student that would be coming in to the district. Unfortunately, I made a mistake in my calculation and I don't have something to present to you. I can't find that error. I'll have it ready for the next meeting. Okay, thank you.
All right.
And can I just quickly note that, that, that formula is based on a calc, that calculation is based on a formula? I just don't want there to be any confusion about, when he talks about the tuition rate for Fremont, that is not in relationship to our negotiations with Fremont about the future of Fremont. It's based on our current contract that is done by a formula that's set by that contract. I just don't want there to be any confusion in the public about where we're at with working with Fremont. All of that is confidential at this time.
All right, we have already done athletics, so we will move Tom.
Yes, we are, we are, per our, what we formally called our reopening plan, we are recommending that we reopen the district in tier two, which is in person with restrictions on, on May 3rd. So as you know, the governor has asked that all district, all school districts reopen five days a week with a remote option for families. And we have done, we are already there, right? So we, we've already done that. We've been doing that since October. Kudos to us. It's huge. We did send out a letter in anticipation of this vote to get a sense from families of which families would need an exemption from that move to tier two with regard to medical needs. And I did instruct the administrators to be very liberal with applying the term medical needs. So I explained to them that if you have a student that's having severe anxiety, if they really just don't feel comfortable and the family reaches out to you, where we need to be, we need to be very careful because we are moving on a continuum from where we started last July, which was, we don't know what's going to happen when school opens, right? We started out very cautiously and watched what other districts did, which I, I personally wish that we had started a little bit faster, but you, that's hindsight being 2020, right? We got students back five days a week in October. We had about 24% of our students remote to 30%, depending on the building for the large part of the school year until now. Each principal has personally emailed or spoken with every single person that was remote. So I didn't send this out to a survey to the community. I didn't ask for feedback. We wanted it to be even more personal than that. We wanted to speak to everyone because it's too big of a deal, right? We needed to know. So Brian has 100 and almost 150 students remote. He is going down to 42. And again, there are still conversations going on because the recent uptick in cases that I spoke about earlier this evening caused some anxiety for some people, rightfully so, right? They, they don't know. They wonder if it's happening at the schools, even though we know for sure that there's no contact, that we're not having any transmission in the schools. We, we have not seen any evidence of that all year. And I'll say that my wife's high school this week in Maine is fully remote for the week because they did have significant transmission in their school. And that could happen, right? We will continue to monitor with the same system that we're using right now. And if we think that there's transmission in the school, then we will take appropriate action. I think that the middle school will have roughly 17 students remote and elementary has less than 10 for K6 or K5. So they, it, it, K6, sorry. And it really is, parents have been, they asked a lot of questions. They taught, administrators spent a lot of hours on the phone and on emails, working with people. And we got a lot of very positive feedback from some families that said, if you hadn't made this a rule that they have to come back, my kid would have fought me forever. Thank you for making it a rule. My kid is going to come back because you said they have to. So, but I do want everyone to understand that, that we handled this very, very carefully and personally for everyone involved. And if anyone in the community has a question about sending their child back still, please talk to your school principal. We wanted it to be a very careful relationship-based process. And that, that seems to have occurred in most instances. Of course, with any decision, I get a couple of emails of people who are really angry and a couple of emails from people that are over the moon happy and I can't, you know, I can't make everybody happy. That's impossible. So I would ask that the board would, would affirm that we will reopen in tier two on May 3rd.
Motion or just we're.
Need a motion and a vote.
Okay. So the, just a couple of points that I'd make. Why don't we make the motion?
Yeah, process wise.
I'll, I'll move the May 3rd.
No, second.
Thank you, Moore.
So I, I, I think that the, the tact that the administration took was, is a correct, the correct track, particularly with the spike in the high schools. I support coming back. I supported coming back in September. But I think as a board, we should also more than just talk about May 3rd. I think we need to start laying the expectation that starting in September next year, it will be at a minimum tier two and everybody will be expected to come back to school. Medical exemptions as needed, but I would expect that those medical exemptions with the increase in the vaccinations and the increase in herd immunity would be much fewer than we have today. But I think that we should be setting that expectation that come September, we expect that we're going to be at a minimum in tier two.
Can I respond to that? I, I, I am anticipating, unless something changes, because this is all dynamic, right? Should we continue on the trend of vaccinations and moving forward a, as we are now, then I, the administration is intending to bring to the board in June, a recommendation that we open school in September in tier two with no remote option.
I'm good with that.
Because we cannot continue to run a school district to school districts. This is impossible, what we're doing. We're barely making it. The teachers are completely burned out. And as the students come back, the people that are providing remote support for students don't have enough students to warrant a full-time remote position. Now, we can discuss this and find the, the middle ground if we need to. But we, there needs to be a point where we go back to the days of you're either in school or you're homeschooling or doing D-Lax. We, we, we cannot continue to run a remote school district and an in-person school district at the, after the close of this year unless something changes in one of the variants of the virus, or there's a reason that would drive us to that direction.
And I, I think it's good to have this discussion now to start.
And I have no problem saying it, all right. I, I want to be very clear with people, remote school does not work for kids.
Correct, I agree.
Period. That's my professional opinion. It is bad. And the, the loss of learning is astronomical. But I was afraid for kids' lives and my staff. And, and I cannot thank you enough last July for saying, let's just take this slow and watch it. See what other districts do, see how it goes for them and then make a decision. And then this board said, bring them back full time. And I was nervous about that. But we did it and we've done a great job as a community. Everybody, parents, moms and dads, you've done a great job. You drove your kids to school. You, you followed the quarantine rules when we asked you to, right? I, I just can't say enough that this is not, there's no one body, group of person or people that have made this work. It's everybody that has made it work. And in September, we need everybody to make it work.
Move the motion.
Vote.
All right, everybody's good. Okay, all in favor? All right, unanimous?
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, back to you. Baking boiler update.
Okay, this is going to be a quick one. The baking boiler, the, the emergency boilers are still operating well. If you don't recall, or if you weren't on the board, then we've lost two boilers at the, at Bakey. And we have an emergency boiler that's been plumbed in. If you look at the back of the building, there's a little tractor trailer that's out back that contains the boiler. It's operating well. We're working with our engineers right now and they've provided specifications. However, some of the bidders have asked for plans and we're in the process of, of working with the engineer for plans. Okay?
Which I want to remind everyone, we, for those of you who are new, particularly Maureen Heather, if you didn't catch it on one of the earlier meetings, we did that because we didn't want to have a vendor telling us what to do with the boiler. We wanted an independent engineer to say, this is what we recommend that you do. So they're working for us, right? So we, we decided to slow down and spend a little more money to do this right. And we also recognize that there may be a correlation to whatever heating system is purchased with the potential air system later, should we need or choose to go that way.
Okay.
Great.
All right, Fremont COVID funds.
That has my name, but I'm going to, oh, did you have a question?
I just had a, a, a question on the, the boiler, a couple of, actually. One is, when do we expect the engineering work to be completed?
Yeah. There's a phone call out to him today. I'm expecting to have it done. We have to have it done by the end of May. And that, so that we can have a, a firm in place in June so that construction can start at the, just after the last day of school.
What construction?
Well, because basically putting in a boiler is so intensive that we may have to replumb the whole mechanical room. And that replumbing, what we're worried about, it may extend outside of that mechanical room and a little bit further into the building. If you were to walk into that room, the size of the equipment that's in there is enormous. And modernly, the equipment is probably about a quarter of the size. So what we're doing is we're stripping out a lot of the, the, like the, the pressure tanks are like the size. There's four of them and they're like the size of these two tables together. And they're up on the ceiling and those are going to be coming down. And we're going to replace it with a pressure tank that's probably about like this big. Okay.
I just want more.
You're done?
Not one more. So I, I just want for clarity for anybody watching and also just to be clear on the board. The HVAC potential is not. The HVAC potential is not a necessity for fixing the boiler.
That's right.
The HVAC, when it came to the facilities committee, was listed in the CIP plan as a possibility with the expectation. That given potential change of administrations, where there might be a lot of federal money available to take care of it, but some people are aware. That's a seven-digit number. Yeah, that's not, that's not a, oh, well, we're going to have the engineers to do it. Then we're building an HVA system. I just want to make this clear to anybody watching at home and. A, a public statement on that.
And I agree with you. Thank you.
Yeah, when will the facilities committee? Get to see this? Proposal or plan?
Let's see, we'll have to get, well, I'll have to talk to the engineer. And make sure that it, uh, you will get it as part of the facility committee. The moment that I receive it, I'll forward it on to the committee.
Okay.
Hey.
Thank you.
This is going to be a, a significant process for the board, just for the public and those of you who are new. This is going to be run completely through the facilities committee and the board. Like, we don't make any of these decisions unilaterally. Matt's just saying that timeline wise. If we're going, we, we have to do something about this, these boilers before school starts next year. So in order to do it, the best case scenario is they're breaking ground the minute school ends. That's what he's shooting for, for a timeline, which means that if we have to have. Extra meetings or facilities committee meetings or extra board meetings. Late May, early June to get this figured out, then we'll have to do that, but we can't rush. We're trying to get the engineer to get this done as soon as possible and it's. It isn't that easy. It's a lot to figure out, right? It's a big deal to do this. So it's, we need it done right, but we want it done fast and it's. It's the, the question of like, at what point do you put so much pressure on the engineer that you're actually like. Risking that the, the confidence in the. The, the work, right? We need it done right. So he's. I know it's hard to remember, but it's me, it's April 7th already.
Yeah.
It's just unbelievable how time just evaporates this year with all the different crises we deal with.
Follow up to the. Meeting schedule. When are we going to have the committee, subcommittee meeting schedule that you're proposing?
Oh, I, I would assume soon, the next week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get moving on that right away. I think Phyllis has got it pretty well roughed out. Yeah. I just need to look at it and talk to Phyllis and then we'll send it out.
Alright.
Thank you.
Now Fremont COVID funds.
Oh, okay. So we have, yeah, we have, um, we have an agenda item to discuss the Fremont, um. Fremont received. I'll give you the, the overview and then Matt will talk about the numbers. Fremont, we received, uh, uh, what was it, Matt? 1.1 million?
Uh, in total, it's going to be 1.1 million, but that one particular grant, um, we received 265,000. Which represent about 200, $200 per student. And it's calculated on the sending district, not the receiving district. Okay, so basically what happened is, 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 um, the, uh, the high school students from Fremont, the money went to Fremont and not to Sanborn Regional. Okay, and the state has asked us to work with Fremont School District, um, to, uh. To try to negotiate some of those funds, um, to us.
And, and if we send Fremont a bill, they'll, they'll pay the, it comes out to be 34,000, is that correct?
Between 38,000 and 42,000.
Okay, so 38 and 42,000. We can invoice them and ask them to give us that money. I'm asking the board to consider that as a gesture of goodwill to allow Fremont to retain their funds because. That 38 to 40,000 dollars for them is a significant sum of money in face of. The expenses that they've had for COVID. We have received a, a significant amount of money this year for COVID expenses and I'm trying to. Just kind of. Say that. It's, it's a lot of money to anyone. So I'm asking the board, what is your, do you want us to invoice them? Or would you like us to let them keep that in lieu of? The, um. The significant hardship that COVID has on a really small district.
So Matt. The reason we have this money is because of your hard work.
The reason why we have so much money is because we, we've taken the opportunities that were afforded to us.
But not this money.
But not this money. This was money that was allocated to us. And, and really where it's come down to me is we've been able to. Um, apply the funds that we've received to expenditures that we've incurred. I, I think I probably have between five and $10,000 that haven't been reimbursed yet. So now we're having to shift our focus into, um, more, um, future directed, um, programs like loss learning. Or, uh, uh, loss of learning programs. So, uh. Yes, this would be beneficial and help cover the costs. It's, it's not. To us, it's not a significant amount of money.
So I'm a little confused about the numbers.
Yep.
You said 200,000, but 38 to 41 of it is. Would be allocated to Fremont students.
Yes, so we received this, it's a two-part grant, okay? So at this part of the grant, we received 265,400 dollars. Which represent $200 per student, our students for Kingston and Newton, okay? Their students at Fremont equate to about, um, 38,400 to 42,000 dollars. It depends upon how many students that Fremont has at that time, that the state calculated it. And, um. And that money went to, um, Fremont.
And those are Fremont students at our high school.
That's right. So if they changed up the formula where, um, they sent the money to the receiving district, we would have received almost $300,000. Okay?
Just one, I give us one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, you had. Brought some information to me about this.
Yeah.
And I asked you, what percentage? Of Fremont's budget is that 41,000 or 38,000? In terms of what they pay us? For tuition and also in terms of their overall budget.
Okay, so, um, the amount that they pay or that they have budgeted for, um, their high school students. Is 4,171,000. It represents 33% of their overall budget. Their K eight budget is 8.4 million dollars, where the total budget is 12. Uh, almost 12.6 million dollars, okay? Um, this amount of money, uh. That they would, if we invoiced them, it represents about 1%.
Of which?
Of their number, the amount of money that they sent to, um, Sanborn Regional.
Okay. So, so of the 4 million, 1% of the 4 million?
Yeah, 1% of 4 million.
Thank you.
So.
Fremont got this money. To offset the costs of COVID. But they didn't incur any costs for COVID for the high school students. We did.
Correct.
So. I have two issues then. One, we incurred the cost, therefore it should be our money. And number two. I don't represent Fremont. I represent Kingston. Some of you represent Newton. I would have a very difficult time if someone stopped me down at the, the Rite Aid saying, Pete. You really voted to let them keep 40 grand? I'm sorry, but that in a sense, I'm going to be hard, is our money. We incurred the cost. They didn't. It was given, it was in a sense found money or free money, if there's ever such a thing. We should get that money. I'm sorry. And I can't go to the taxpayers that I represent and say, hey. We're nice people.
So I, I completely, uh, understand Pete's position, but I'd like some clarification. The state decided on the formulation. The state decided it's on the sending and the state sent them the money.
Yep.
Um, so you got the problem of ownership is, uh, nine tenths of the law. Uh, I would expect that from a legal perspective, if I was their counsel, being employed by their school board, I would say. That's our money. The state sent it to us. They, they created the sending calculation. They said to Sanborn, see if you can't reach an arrangement where they'll give it to you. They didn't say to Sanborn. You must give this to Sanborn when they ask for it. So the state regulation or the state rule, as I understand it, and the distribution of this was, it is being distributed. Based upon sending and it's sending. Schools property. And Matt, when you first mentioned this to me, I said, God love you, see if you, what you can do, but. I'm not, I'm not thinking that if I was in their shoes, I'd be voting to give you any money.
So I, I think it's important to note that. There is a, uh. This is a difficult decision and this is why I brought it to the board. I need you to make this decision and I'm fine with whatever decision you make. We aren't. Here to convince you one way or the other. We're telling you that. We are in the midst of a very. Difficult series of negotiations with Fremont regarding them maintaining a relationship with our district. We returned 2.5 million dollars to our taxpayers last year. They got zero of that. They are not happy with that, even though they understand that it's. The contract and that's the way it is and there's nothing we, we or they can do about it. They have been absolutely. Fourth right and fine about if we invoice them, they're going to give us this money. They have been decent about it. I said to Superintendent Hutton, I will ask the board what amount they would like us to invoice you for, how much? Because I felt like it was. Better for me to talk to you all and let you know that there was some flexibility. With this pot of money because it is gray. It was paid to them. They've been reasonable about us invoicing them and paying us. I'm saying. We received a significant sum of money this year. I mean, we received how much, Matt? 1.?
1134.
Yes, 1. Yeah. And then what percentage of our budget is that, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
On 35 million, it's 3%.
3%, a little more than 3%. And they got less than 1% and I, I just, I, I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to make, I'm trying to say. You, I'm employed by you. You are accountable to your taxpayers and the question is, can you straight? If Pete, if I asked Pete on the corner, how did you let them keep that 40 grand? And your response is, they paid us 4.3 million and. That's a way, way bigger sum of money to them than it is to us. And. We felt like it was the right thing to do in the face of all these COVID expenses for the two districts. Some people would be okay with that. Some people would be really mad about that.
I, 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 I wouldn't even go down that road.
Right.
Say they owe us the money because it was given to them for our expense.
Right, right.
And I don't represent Fremont, I represent you.
I, yeah, and, and that's fine with me. I just need you guys to decide and tell us what to do.
That's correct.
Any other comments?
Now, is there a motion on the floor?
Not yet, we need.
There probably should have been for us. So I'm going to make the motion. I'm going to make the motion, we invoice them. Somebody can second it or not.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So I.
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie.
The, you know, the. One is, they might be willing to, under the discussions with the old superintendent, they've got a new superintendent. They don't have any legal obligation to pay this and. And then what I said to Matt at the time too was. They didn't get any, Tom just made the point, they didn't, they don't get any money back for the money they give us when we, when we reimburse money to our taxpayers. So that is their. Excess payments going to the taxpayers of Newton and Kingston. And ultimately. You know, we're looking at not too many years down the road, we are going to. Be faced with the potential of losing a third of our high school. And if we think that we have issues now. You know, God forbid, if that comes, if that comes to, to fruition, the, 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 the whole face and scope of this district changes. They're part of the district. It's, it's pulling one of our legs out. So, I mean, I, to, to, to me, I, I completely understand, uh, Pete's position and I will absolutely get. Hit with red hot pokers, um. But they don't have a legal obligation to pay us. And just as we didn't have a legal obligation to give them any part of the return funds. That were returned to the taxpayers. We chose to not do what we weren't legally obligated to do and I would expect they'd do the same.
Um. I. Can see it both ways. I mean, Jamie's right, they don't have a legal obligation. Pete's right, we represent Newton and Kingston. And that money is for. The. Expense of mitigating the cost of COVID. As far as going forward with Fremont. That's a whole nother dimension of issues.
It is, yeah.
Um, I don't think we're going to buy. A deal with them. By not invoicing them for this 38 or 41,000 dollars. I think we have a obligation to our taxpayers. We spent this money, we should try to get it back. Um, and going forward, as far as Fremont goes. Part of the negotiation should probably include, if we give money back to the taxpayers. What's their, what's their part of it? But that's another. That's something in the future. You know, this, this district spends a lot of money. On education. More than Fremont does, more than the surrounding communities. And I don't think we can afford to be giving money away. That's, that's my two cents.
I guess I'll, Jamie?
Not even, I agree with Jim. I can see, definitely see both points. You know, I, I'm, it's important to, it is important to build goodwill with Fremont. But I tend to agree with Jim that this is. Probably so inconsequential either way, that. It's probably not going to buy, you know, their goodwill. What were your discussions with them, Tom? Did this, did this? Did this come up? Did it, was, did they sort of say, hey, you know, taxpayers really like?
Yeah, well, uh, which part? I mean, all of it. I've discussed all of it with Superintendent Hutton at, at length. I mean. It, this is why Matt came with the calculations of this is 1% to them. Just this small 40, because their budget is so, you know, they have such a smaller population. The $40,000 is almost 1% of what they spend. Um, so it may not, maybe. I, I, I just caution everyone that what's consequential to us and what's consequential to a smaller district is different, but. Your jobs, as Pete has said, is to represent the voters of Kingston and Newton. And I, I really couldn't tell her. I didn't feel comfortable saying, we'll invoice you or we won't invoice you. The only way I was going to do this was to bring this to you and have you vote. Right? Because it didn't feel right to me to make decisions about what we do or don't invoice in this situation. Matt and I talked about it at length. We, we don't feel like we have the authority to make that decision. Right? We, we, we wanted you to, to decide and if you decide to invoice them, that's within your right. Right? It is. If you decide not to, that's within your right.
So. As a representative of both, actually, both communities. I guess I feel like it's. I feel, I guess I'm more on Jamie's argument that, that it's. It's, it's also our, it's also our responsibility to try to, um. I, I think it would be better in the long run for Fremont to stay. And so I think that, to me, representing my, you know, my constituents. It's really in their best, it's really in everyone's best interest to, to make this gesture. I hope that it's, um, recognized as a gesture because I feel like. I think Jim is, may, may, you know, definitely has a point that it's, it may. You know, I really hope that they. Make, make it known to their taxpayers that we are actually making this gesture. We don't, we could pursue this. Whether or not we'd be successful. But that to me, that's a consideration. It's not just, it doesn't come down to just. You know, the $40,000 is something that our taxpayers could use, which is obviously true, but I think in the long run. I, you know, I think I'd, I would like to work on getting on that relationship and getting Fremont to feel comfortable. Staying as part of our district. So I'm more on that side of, um, not invoicing them.
I realize it's 1% of their budget. But they didn't incur any expense out of their budget for this. Wasn't like they took money from their budget and incurred because they didn't incur the expense.
Right.
What we're saying is reimburse us for what we spent. So why are we subsidizing their budget?
Well, they, they incurred expenses at K eight. Significant expenses.
But we're not looking for the money to K eight. We're looking for the money for the high school.
That's the argument. You're, you're, you're citing the.
And I gotta tell you, I hope Jim and I go out to eat sometime. Because I'm going to spend a whole bunch of money buying the best steak there is because Jim, I'm a nice guy. So you can say.
It's hard.
What I, what I would also suggest is. So, you know, we, we talked about this in the next finance committee meeting. Is it's time to start looking at what we're looking at in terms of what can be given back to taxpayers this year and where we are standing on income. Is it's time to start looking at what we're looking at in terms of what can be given back to taxpayers this year and where we stand on encumbrances, et cetera. Um, and, and Matt did a fabulous job last year on encumbrances and, and tightening up encumbrances and, and actually pulled some encumbrances back. Um, so these are things that we already believe have been spent. Maybe there's money to be had there. Ultimately, getting into a lawsuit with a district that you're trying to court to keep as part of our. District going forward in the future is not the best way to keep that district as part of our district, in my opinion.
I think you're taking a step extra. Nobody's talking about a lawsuit. Nobody's talking about if they don't pay. My understanding that they agreed they would pay. And I think. If you want to call it a lawsuit, I think it'd be a slam dunk that they didn't incur the expense we did. And I can't see anybody ever going against Sanborn. But I don't think it's ever gonna get to that, because I believe it's already been agreed that we incurred the expense. And I believe you said that Superintendent Hutton said invoice us or not.
Yeah, well.
That doesn't mean she has the authority. Now, I gotta tell you, in all honesty, she may have said that. I don't know if she had the authority to say that. And people sometimes say things they wish they hadn't. Except for me.
No, no, I, 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 yeah. That was perfect, Peter. And, and I, I, again, I, I think that. Um, the thing that you as a board need to struggle with tonight and figure out an answer to is, do you, do you? What do you want to do with this money? Do you want to invoice them or not? I think we've kind of gone, gone around.
That's the motion.
That's the motion. So Pete made a motion that the board has to decide on. Let, let me just walk through the process here to make sure I've got this right. Pete, you made a motion to invoice them.
Yes.
If the board votes that down, someone will have to make an, a motion to not invoice them.
That's correct.
And then the board would have to pass that. Okay. I'm looking to you for guidance on that, because I go, I don't want to mess this up.
That's correct. Hope they, hope both of them. Hope both of them don't. Hopefully one of them will pass. Can we move the motion, Madam?
Yes, I would love to. Uh, okay, so all in favor of invoicing Fremont? Okay, two, yes. Those not in favor? So Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Bashaw, Ms. Mahoney, Ms. Ingham, and myself are no. Okay, so the motion does not pass. Um, do we have a new motion on the table?
Can I make a motion to not invoice them?
I think we've had a discussion. Anybody have anything else they wanna? Okay.
I wanna change my vote, just to be difficult.
Like, that's surprising. He abstained earlier, for God's sake.
Well, I can tell you why later.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, uh, all in favor of?
Could we have a discussion?
Oh, yes, I thought.
Yeah, I, I, I would be. I would be very interested, and, and you do not have to answer this by, it's not, it's, it's, it's your own personal reasons. But I'm really curious why we would let them keep money that we had an expense to. And, and we, we incurred an expense of roughly forty thousand dollars using the state formula. And we're not asking those who were now getting money. That's in a sense an eighty thousand dollar loss to us. Right? Money we didn't get, money we spent. So anyway, um, it's like forty fives, right? But, but I, you don't have to answer, but I, I'm really.
I, I guess I, I just, you're seeing it as an eighty thousand dollar loss, and I'm seeing it as a. How many millions of dollars could we lose down the road? So when I bump into somebody at Rite Aid and they say, why did you let this eighty thousand dollars go? I'm sort of paying the, the long, playing the long game that this is the goodwill. And that's why I, I think it's gonna come back to us twofold if we let them keep this money. You're, you're absolutely right, and you're thinking that, that money is ours. Uh, just another point. I don't know. Can they pay something we don't invoice them for? Could Fremont, out of goodwill, pay us without us invoicing?
No, I think we have to invoice them.
They can't, like, did they get something from the?
You're asking, it's a technical question.
I, I don't know. No, but, no, I mean, if Fremont's aware that they got this money that they shouldn't have. Could Fremont decide that they're gonna be good people and pay us? I, I don't know. I don't know if they, I don't know how it works in the school system where you can't pay something unless you've actually gone and invoice. But maybe they're saying, oh, we got a notice from the state saying we didn't really deserve this money. I, I agree with your thinking that. It's right just the our money, but I'm gonna play the long game. We want Fremont to stay, and I, I think they're a big part of our district. And I don't think it's a hundred thousand dollars or eighty thousand on the line. I think it's potentially more.
Can I, can I quickly just answer one of our questions? I, I don't think Fremont would pay without an invoice.
Okay. And that doesn't really change my decision. Just, that was just maybe a.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, missed what you said.
Fremont wouldn't pay unless I invoice them.
Yes, yeah.
But they could. I mean, there's nothing to prohibit them. That was really the question, right?
I'm not really, I'm not saying that we shouldn't invoice them, because I think that they're gonna, out of their greatness of their hearts, decide to pay us some money. I don't really think that's what's gonna happen, but.
Can, can I just add one more thing to this? I, I tried to say it earlier this evening. We've received so much money from the federal government towards COVID costs that we're now looking towards forward-looking programs. So it's not reimbursement based. Pretty much everything except for like ten thousand dollars has been applied to a federal grant. Okay, so we're looking towards programs towards like, um, loss of education or loss of teaching. So, um, to me personally, the forty thousand, yeah, it's gonna reimburse a share of. What we owe or what we've paid, but it's not gonna be. Such a huge burden to us as it is to them. And that's why I raised it to the superintendent.
Um, so I'll throw my two cents in here. My thought process is. We have given our taxpayers back a lot of money that Fremont has helped pay into. And they have gotten nothing back from that. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that's the way it's done. This money will definitely help them. Um, they aren't obligated to give it to us. Um, so as a gesture of goodwill. Um, to make up for times where maybe they didn't get money back in the past that. Maybe we can rediscover in the future, you know, they would get back. Um, I, I would like to, I'd like to pay it forward. I'd like to reimburse them. As a, as a good.
Last, last thing I want to say. One, they did get something. They got education of their children. Number two, I think we're sending a very bad signal. As to what the future negotiations are. I think saying some of the things that we said tonight, and it's okay, you said them, I'm not saying. Sends a signal to them that we're really anxious that they might be leaving us. That's number two. And number three. I don't think this forty thousand dollars when it comes to negotiation is even gonna be in their mind. I, I think when we sit down. And we negotiate, we negotiate. Number four, we have all entered into lousy contracts. I've entered into contracts and say, I never should have done that. And I've entered into contracts like, boy, am I glad I did that. But they had smart people on their side, and we have smart people on our, on our side. And there's something called buyer's remorse. I don't know if they have buyer's remorse or not, based on the scuttlebutt on the street. Well, it must be true, it's the scuttlebutt on the street. I mean, it was in Facebook, so it's gotta be true. You know, but it appears that some people have buyer's remorse. Well, that's okay, too. They didn't enter into this blind. We didn't enter this blind when it came to this contract. And that's behind us now. We've got a new one coming up. They may not even be willing to talk to us. From what I understand, they're gonna be talking to other people. We may not even be in the running. And that's okay, too. They're gonna take care of their constituents, just like I believe we should be taking care of our constituents. And I'm not someone not taken care of by doing this. You've all got your reasons, you know? I hate to do this, but when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we were like, you know, I don't agree with you, but if that's what you want to do, that's okay with me. And you know what? Next week, you'll be saying to me, Pete, I don't agree with you and, and the other group, but that's the way it's gonna be. It's okay with me. That's what this is all about, isn't it? All right? You don't have to agree with me. You don't have to not agree with me. You gotta vote the way you feel is best. And that's what you're doing. And that's what we're supposed to do here. I wish they did that in the federal level. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, all right.
You had to go there.
He had.
I had to go there. I had to go there.
All right, any other discussion or are we good to move on? Okay, all right. So we will, we are moving to vote, uh, to not invoice Fremont. Uh, all in favor? Right, oh, not.
Did we already vote?
I think we already voted.
No, we haven't yet. That was just the discussion. Now we have to vote to.
Oh, now.
This is the vote to not invoice.
Okay. Motion you made, Maura.
That's the one you want.
Okay.
Jamie.
Okay, so Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Bashaw, Ms. Mahoney, Ms. Ingham, and myself are yes. Uh, those not in favor?
You and I are right, Jim.
Mr. Broderick and Mr. Baker.
Wisdom comes with age.
Okay.
Well, there's me a smart guy.
Um, all right, uh, second public comment.
Maybe we do.
You never know.
Well, if Jamie and I ever agreed on anything, it'd be, you know, earth shaking anyway. We'd feel the ground shake.
Point of order? Phyllis, do you, um, that was technically public comment, although you didn't go to the podium. So to, you need to state your name and stuff.
Yeah.
I don't, and I'm sorry, but I don't actually. Oh, okay.
Okay, all right. Uh, so next meeting agenda, if anyone has anything they would like to be on the next meeting agenda, please get it to Tom and I. The.
Tomorrow.
Oh, jeez.
It's a week away. Remember, we have the two weeks.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so get it to us tomorrow.
Wait, I'm confused here.
We have.
We said last time it was gonna be.
The meeting next week?
Yeah.
No, no, that was about February next year.
No, 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 it says next meeting be Wednesday, April fourteenth.
Fourteenth, it is, because we always meet.
Remember, I, I'm a.
Before April vacation, because.
I just wanted to make sure it said, because I, I'm gonna be away the twenty-first and you and I talk, so.
Next Wednesday.
Be here next week.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, uh, so the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six P M in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Hearing to accept the donation beginning at six thirty P M. And would someone like to take us into non-public?
Larry? Thanks, Jake. That was a long meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, Madam Kim and I make a motion that we enter non-public session according to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three. Roman numeral two, A.
Second.
I'm going by what's written here, folks.
I know. I think that, that has to be a roll call vote, doesn't it?
No, there's no one remote.
No one remote.
No, but going into.
Oh, it does. You're right. You're right. Thanks, Jamie.
Pete, yeah, Jamie?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And Heather?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion, come out of non-public.
Oh, we did that already.
We did that.
We did that. You're now in public.
Non-public, all right. I just wanna go.
Seal the minutes.
You want to do the seal? Well, do we vote first and then seal the minute? No, okay, make a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session, RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three. And now, roman numeral two, paragraph A.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity, forever and a day.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
I'm.
All right, unanimous.
I think we have to do their roll too, but we just did.
Sure, if we, I'm not sure.
Good now, because we're not non-public anymore.
Oh, that's right. We're out of it. No, we voted to go in by roll. We have to vote to come out by roll call.
We did. We, we voted, we voted out by roll call. Now we're in public.
All right.
All right, so.
Start first.
We have, uh, so I would like to make a motion to nominate Christine DeRozier to become Director of E L A. Uh, K through twelve, effective July first.
What is B L A? I'm sorry, I'm a person at home.
English Language Arts.
Okay, no, it's just for the people at home.
Thanks, Pete.
My second motion.
Okay, uh, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Okay, um, I would like to also make a motion to create a position. Of Special Ed Coordinator, um, at the Baky School, effective immediately.
I second the motion.
All in favor? All right, unanimous. Okay, I think that is it, and we are adjourned.